Please rise for a pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please take a roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Present.
Commissioner Yoder?
Here.
Commissioner Weiner?
Here.
Commissioner Memberto?
Here.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes, here.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Here.
And Chair Whitliff?
Here, thank you. Before we move to approval of agenda, I just have one thing to say. Last meeting on May 4th, things got a little hairy with the speaker. Everybody was talking at once. So it got a lot, it got confusing. So I guess going forward, we'll have one commissioner speak at a time. When they're done, when they're off their box, the next one can go. Sound good? All right, thank you. Approval of agenda, at this time, the planning commission can take action and approve the June 6th, 2024 agenda. Their motion.
Motion.
Second.
Who made it?
Nick.
Nick? Motion by Nick, second. Bob?
Bob.
Discussion? None? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Conflicts of interest this time. If any member of the planning commission has any type of conflict on tonight's agenda, please speak up. None? Okay, none along. Approval of minutes, at this time, the planning commission can approve the May 2nd, 2024 meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
I'll make it.
Motion by Roger, second. Marlene, discussion? None? Please take a roll.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Memberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
Chair Whitliff?
Yes, thank you. Correspondents? None?
None at this time.
Okay, thank you, that's good. Presentation, Mr. Jeff McCula, City DPW. There you go.
Good evening. I don't recall how long it's been since the last time you invited me here, maybe a year?
About a year, yep.
So I recall at that time, I talked about our efforts to construct the clean water recovery facility. We upgraded the headworks to our wastewater treatment plant and eliminated the last combined, I'm sorry, eliminated the last, I always say combined sewer overflow, but once we separated all our sewers, it becomes a sanitary sewer overflow. Happy to announce that that project is functioning and doing well. We had two inches of rain Tuesday morning. We put all the excess flow to the plant into a storage tank. Those storage tanks hold 2 million gallons apiece. They're 26 feet tall and in that storm, put 25 inches in one tank, so it's working well. The last remaining piece of that is the state of Michigan requires us to certify that all the calculations in the design meet the worst-case scenario. It's called the design storm. So we have to wait for five inches of rain to happen within 24 hours to be able to certify that the plant worked and function as it should have. I'm praying we don't ever get to that storm because it'll be, it'll wreak havoc on the community as a whole. But what we are doing is having the engineers take samples of the storms that we do have and then we can extrapolate through graphing and so forth that it performed this way under this condition, so we can project out that it's meeting the expectations. One final thing on that, two weeks ago, we went to the annual American Public Works Conference for the Michigan branch and the city manistee received Project of the Year Award for, I think it was projects in the 5 to 15 or $20 million range for that clean water recovery facility, so not only is it functioning and serving the community, but it was recognized statewide for its functioning. I tried to make a small list of significant projects that we're working on, just to update you on. The list grows, the more I just sit and think about it. There's a lot of stuff going on in Manistee, as you guys are aware. The first item I had, and feel free to ask questions when we get done, if you have questions on anything that deals with public works, I'm happy to answer those. One of the projects that we just finished was upgrading upgrades at Fifth Avenue Beach. We repaved a portion of the Fifth Avenue itself in front of the Coast Guard Station. We also repaved the parking lot and installed some dune grass and then a wall on the Lake Michigan side to try to help some of the, well, two functions, one to help some of the erosion, the blowing sand. The other thing is, people tend to park over the edge of the asphalt. It breaks off and when it gets into small pieces, that you see it on the beach all the time and it's too small for our cleaner to pick up, so very happy with the way that that turned out. It seems to be well received by the community. I feel it was very appropriate to fix that facility after we did all the improvements at First Street last year. And you guys are well aware that we were able to invest some of our funds, but also some of our captured future tax funds from the Hampton Inn and all the work that we did together with the planning commission and the developers to get the stormwater improvements, the entrance to the parking lot, the water main loop. So really, just so many wonderful things that have happened down there. We also just recently finished a playground grant that we received a substantial amount of money, just under $100,000 from the community foundation. I think Commissioner Schmansky was the catalyst for that. He suggested that we, that city council put money towards working, upgrading Morton Park. We actually took that money and we did a lot of internal what we call force count work, but our labor, our staff's labor and time and equipment. And then we went to the foundation and used that as a match and got so much more. So if you haven't been by Morton Park in a while, the improvements are tremendous.
Fantastic. My question to you then, we did last night, who owns that Morton Park? The city or Morton?
Morton Park is owned by Morton itself.
That's what I thought.
And then the city has a long-term lease for the property.
That's what I thought. I can give you this.
Yep, so that work is done, looks great. Neighbors have come out and said, unbelievable how many kids are now coming to the park and their parents are starting to come with them and so it's really great to see. But leveraging that grant, we also did some improvements at Duffy. We put up a shade structure, some new benches and a merry-go-round. We put in electric for machine pitch baseball at Duffy and at Sands Park. We also did quite a bit of work down at First Street Beach. We put in two new basketball hoops. They're acrylic. They're supposed to be prison-proof, if you will. But I've driven by there and see the kids hanging on the rim and bouncing up and down and so far they're holding up better than the older style. We also did the softball, the north softball field improvements to the infield and got that regraded. We took out the hump that was at the beginning of the infield. We did quite a few things there, so we're ready to close that one out and move on to the next project. Also, right now, we've got, we're rehabbing and cleaning one of our water wells. That's in process. Next Thursday, a rehab on Eighth Street is planned from Tamarack to US 31. Then we skipped the section, the two sections that are new and then it picks back up from Davis all the way to Vine Street. And what we're doing is putting what's called a slurry seal on that. And it really just encapsulates the existing asphalt. It protects it from the UV rays, so it's starting to crack. Last fall, we crack sealed it all and prepped it, but really it's to preserve the condition of that pavement, probably for seven to 10 years. And actually, we were just, I was talking with a resident out there today. When we separated the sewers in 2000, I'm sorry, in 1998 is when that pavement was laid down, so it's lasted beyond what we would expect in northern Michigan. And that project will just take a couple days, but we've also come up, came up with a new street sign for the community that has our logo on it and a border. So that project will be the first one in the city that'll have all the street signs upgraded to that. All the other projects that I mentioned will then carry on with that. And then we also had budgeted on an annual basis to kind of pick the corridors and, you know, maybe it's Maple Street or one of the other major streets, First Street it could be. So we're going to systematically work on upgrading our signage. We're in the middle of a master planning for the, our beaches, all four of them. So First Street Beach, Fifth Avenue, Manmade Lake, and then North Beach Access. Some of you have participated in the, in the, I don't know, there's so many different levels, but we had a steering committee kind of that identified how this process wanted to run, working with the Spicer Group. We then had stakeholder meetings and had probably 60 to 70 people come in different sessions. We had six different sessions and speak specifically about the facilities, how we use them, what do you like about them, what do you think are opportunities? And then last weekend, we held open houses. In the morning, we were at Fifth Avenue Beach and then in the afternoon, we were at First Street. And we've had between 90 and 100 citizens come and just chat with us and kind of, you know, show some priorities. And then there's an online survey for everybody to participate in and that, you can find that on the city's website. And Spicer's been doing Facebook blast for that, too. But it's been 15 years since the last time we did the master plans. We've upgraded a lot of the facilities at at First Street and Fifth Avenue and so we really kind of want to reset. Community's changing, the demographics are changing, so we want to know what the community is looking forward to as we, you know, plan those futures. And as planners, you guys can appreciate that, I believe.
Jeff, at the Manmade Lake area, you said you're developing. Did we ever, the city ever buy that parcel of property that was for sale?
We actually have a purchase agreement on it. Well, not a purchase agreement. We have a letter of commitment from the owner. And we have submitted a grant to the DNR Land Trust Fund. And there's also some discussions with the community foundation on helping us with that, so I think we're on the path to securing that, taking down the orange fencing, and then I think it opens up.
But I mean, the amount is ridiculous. But anyhow, we haven't bought it yet, though.
We've got that down to a lower level. And then the city manager's been corresponding with also the DNR and the National Park Service. If you recall years ago, when Fricono's was being developed, we had talked about selling some of that property so they can expand their deck. And what we found out was, if we sell park property, we've got to buy more valuable park property and then we've got to develop it. And so we had looked at a portion of the Morton property that we bought to expand the treatment plant and found that it was going to take a lot of, it was going to take more money to get that parcel where we needed to qualify than what the transaction was worth. But now we're exploring whether or not that parcel at Manmade Lake may satisfy that, so.
Thank you.
The next project I have is Lincoln Street from Washington Street to US 31. Terrible condition. It's a local street. About eight years ago, M.DOT came up with the first grant program that funds local street rehab. It's the only one they have. It's called Category B. We've applied every single year and haven't come close to being granted. This one, they were awarded, we were awarded 300, I think it's 380,000, maybe 375. So that contract, we've bid it, we've designed it, we've bid it out. Two weeks from yesterday, well, the next council meeting, we'll have the contract on there and construction should begin in July on that, so that's a little bit of water upgrade, upgrades and then reconstruction of the pavement and curbing. Along similar lines is Sixth Street from Maple Street to Robinson, so along the old Kennedy School. We are going to be grinding the asphalt and repaving that. A lot of the, I mean, that's a very wide section of pavement. And it's actually very unsafe to have that much pavement that wide without a dedicated use. And if you remember when the school was open, I was a parent, I remember it very vividly. You had stacked buses, cars and drop-offs and kids running around and so we've been working with the school for several years and they are going to put their parking lot kind of where the old football field was, if you remember that, off of Robinson and Sixth. And then they will also have a bus, a separate bus loop and pickup drop-off. And so they're really pushing all that, that traffic to the west side of the school. So we're going to narrow that, that roadway up and we're going to put in a dedicated turn lane. We've also kind of aligned the sidewalks for pedestrian flows and so that project's been bid, awarded. Reese Riley is the contractor on that. We expect that to begin probably in the next 30 days, 30 to 45 days. I think we've got a pre-con set up in two weeks for that. And then we're also working with the school to try to add a sidewalk from Seventh Street to Eighth Street. So some improvements around there. Another project that we put out for bid and we tried to open up bids today and didn't receive bids, but it is a water main connection on Spruce Street, basically Spruce Street Hill, and then repaving the section between Second and Fourth Street and then what we call the, basically an overflow structure at First Street by the Armory. I don't remember how long ago now, all the years kind of blend together, but the last very large storm that we had, I remember we had 50-some basement floodings in the community and quite a few happened at Lighthouse Landings. And so they had concerns over if you put a hotel in, you're going to add more sewage. If we get that big storm again, does that make life worse, you know, worse for us? So I don't want to get too detailed in it for you, but I will if you want, but basically, when we separated the sewers on First Street in that vicinity, we ran a new sewer down First Street. The old sewer used to go along the top of the riverbank. It's still active and it still has the flow from all those houses on First Street and around the river. So what we're going to do is install, basically just install a manhole and a very high pipe. So if the sewage level ever gets high and surcharges in the manhole, there's a second pathway and it negates any of the additional flows that are coming from the First Street area. And it literally won't cost that much money. So the stuff on Spruce Street Hill, we had a water main that leaked last summer. We went to fix it and we found that the soils were leaching the iron out of the pipe. And that happens a lot in clay soils. This was a little bit unique. So we actually, we deadheaded the main, so the main stops halfway up the hill where the soils are not reacting to the pipe anymore and then it stops at the Fourth Street intersection. What we're planning to do is take the dead end that's on the hill and run it straight east up to the end of Third Street because there's a dead end there. And that way, we solve two dead ends and we're going to put in a PVC pipe, so it's not affected by those soils. And then the hill, when that water main broke, water got underneath the pavement, it rippled it. You guys probably have driven it. I wanted it to settle down because what we're going to do is mill off two inches or repave two inches and it should be fine. But if we didn't, if we didn't let it sit and settle out, then we'd have to take it all the way down to the gravel, regrade it and it's probably three times the cost, so. So the two contractors that we were expecting bids on today said, just couldn't get the numbers in at the last minute, so we're going to extend the bid period out a couple weeks and we feel we'll get two bids on that and then build that this summer. Another project that's out for bid right now is the million-dollar upgrades to the Riverwalk. We got a grant through the EDA.
Sorry, I thought I turned it off.
So that project is out for bid right now. I think it opens in a couple weeks and we hope that work will begin this summer and continue on through this fall. Also, the North Riverwalk in Memorial Park, we received a grant from the DNR Trust Fund. We worked on that for five years and we finally got awarded the money. So it'll be, it's pretty much a redo of that park, a whole remake. New walkways, new retaining walls, new landscaping, new walkways, the fishing, you know, down to the fishing piers and stuff. The only thing it doesn't affect is the gazebo or the ban shell. That specifically was not allowed in the DNR grant, so we had to, we had to take our aerial imagery and just kind of carve that out.
But the staircase is going to be replaced?
We can do the staircase, yes.
That was the only part that?
And, and at the bottom of the staircase where that ban shell is, we will cut all the way up through the park to give a barrier-free access. So from the parking lot down, it will be barrier-free access. The legislature just approved the funding. They approved the grant, but there's no money until the legislature finds the money and appropriates it. That's happened, so we should get our grant agreement and we'll start designing on that in the next month or two. Yeah.
You spoke of the Riverwalks. Were there any talk of extensions or just improvements to what we have?
The grant that we're doing now is, does not include extensions. It includes some new access points and repairing some access points, some lighting improvements, some drainage improvements.
There was talk about taking it out to let Manistee Lake, you know?
Yeah, this doesn't include that.
Yeah, okay, okay.
The switchback that's next to Dick's Barber Shop, it's an ADA accessible switchback. It's actually sliding down the hill and it has pushed the Riverwalk itself. They're separate structures, but it has pushed the Riverwalk and it has tipped it. And so last fall, we went, my staff went in and put in support beams and we check it monthly. It's not moving. We're going to put in a steel sheet pile wall in between the Riverwalk and that switchback to hold it in place. We've done soil, you know, exams on it and yeah, so that's part of the project. One of the other significant parts of the project is removing the existing treated wood. There's a lot of treated wood and concrete treated wood. So removing that treated lumber and then replacing it with, oh my gosh, I'm drawing a blank. It's not a composite. It's a natural wood. Kebony is the product. And it's actually a Swedish pine and it's injected with natural oil, or I'm sorry, natural wood.
Smell.
I'm drawing a blank now, but it's naturally treated and it fills the cellular voids and it makes it water-resistant, mildew-resistant.
Like a resin?
Yeah, it's like a wood liqueur. It's extracted from the wood and then reinjected in it. If we can afford to do it, if the bids come in good, it's going to be fantastic, so.
It's a kebony?
Kebony.
Is there an option for the composite if that is too expensive?
We actually, you know, we did the composite down at the west end by First Street and I thought it turned out great. It was less slippery when it was wet, looked very professional. When the bird scooters were here, the kids burnt out and they actually melted and there's big black streaks in it. So that was one of the concerns with that PVC material. And then the other thought through this process was, we're a lumbering town and using a natural wood product, you know, just kind of fits that a little bit more. So that's the direction that we're currently moving in. We did look at the E-Pay from the rainforest stuff. It's so expensive and we just thought, not the right, not the right kind of product to celebrate in our community, so. Yeah, so that's proceeding. We also have signal upgrades at First and Maple. Not only are we replacing the signal boxes themselves, but we're going to put in pedestrian crossing just like we have at 31 and First Street and on River Street at the two signals there. That was supposed to be put in last fall, but because it's the detour for the 31 Bridge, I've had to push it, push it, push it, so we're looking at July 10th for a start date on that and it takes about three weeks to complete it. This current budget, the city council funded a third parks position, so we went from two full-time to three. So this spring, we're trying to catch up on a lot of deferred maintenance and so you'll see little projects going on, going on all over the place. I think it's making a difference already and I hope the public sees that, too. 31 Bridge, I don't even want to talk about it unless you guys do. There was a nice article.
There'll probably be some questions.
There was a nice article today in the News Advocate or coming out tomorrow. I saw it. But it gives an update. There's expectations from the state and the contractor that they'll be able to button up the two major items yet this month. I'm still nervous about 4th of July. It's right around the corner and I know it's impacting businesses, but there's not a whole lot of control we have over it. I attend their progress meetings and just kind of keep reporting back and
Well, they got half of it to go down.
It functions. And you know what? I keep hearing people say, nobody's working on it. Well, the things that are being done are all underneath it. They're all internal. All the exterior stuff happened last fall during the winter, the spring, so, yeah.
Took concrete barriers down, so.
Yeah, they removed them.
And they're starting to take down the electronic signage boards that are, that are down the highways in all our directions, so we're getting closer. We're getting closer.
They've got the detour signs everywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
So upcoming projects, just a few that I thought you should be aware of is when that bridge is finally done, now before they did that project, we went, we got a critical bridge grant and we upgraded Maple Street Bridge. Took a lot less time. And then we also upgraded Memorial Drive. Got some, kind of, some mini-grant from the state to help us with that. After it's done, we're going to repair Washington Street. It's being beat up but primarily because there's a lot of water main work that needs to be done there. And we've got, we're using that as our small urban project, so next year, that'll be under construction. It's not as massive. It's just literally repairing the water main and then new curb and gutter and pavement. The gravel's good. Most of the other underground utilities are fine. We also received another M.DOT grant, a Category F grant, to resurface First Street from 31 to Sibin, Sibin, down to Fifth Street, a small section of Fifth Street and then Caziasco to Eighth Street. And so that'll include grinding off the top layer of asphalt, paving it back, a little bit of curb, I should say, a little bit of sidewalk improvements, but mostly those are just at the intersections to meet the ADA compliance. So that's under design. We'll bid it this winter and it'll have spring construction. Of course, the streetscape, there's a committee that's working on what that streetscape refresh is going to look like. What else? So now that we've got the majority of our sewer work done with the sewer separation, with the clean water recovery, what, if you, and I'm sure you've all studied our capital improvement plans in the budget, but what you would notice if you saw that is a lot of, a lot of our focus now is on water main projects. They happen to align with streets that are in really bad shape. They're undersized water main or water main where we've got bad soils and we have frequent breaks. So the next three to five years, we'll see a lot of water main improvements and then the street upgrades over the top of those. And then the biggest project, probably in this community's history, will be the reconstruction of US 31 from M-55 all the way to Stronach Road. And the state has budgeted $32 million for that. There's probably going to be another five or six million of city contributed projects towards that. So when they're tearing it up and completely rebuilding it, we're going to replace the majority of our water main north of, north of the river and a little bit to the south. We've already done a lot of lining of the sewers south of the river, so we've got most of that in hand. We're going to do three more pipe segments out in the Parkdale area this upcoming summer, summer, fall. So we're kind of ready for that and then we've, we've got some other little sewer repairs and stuff, but that's, that's going to be a tremendous project. And the state, 2027. It'll probably be a full-year project. And right now, the state is planning to have it's open to traffic. Um, and then right now the state is planning to have its open to traffic. I'm not going to prom- promise that doesn't change, but what, what they're envisioning is half with. So they shift both northbound, southbound, one lane to one side while they construct the other side. When that's built, they flip them over. They, they've done them in Traverse City. They've done them up in Beulah. I mean, it's pretty common. Um, so they, uh, in fact, so we, we, I've, we've probably had a dozen meetings with the state already. Um, and so a lot more coming, but that's going to be a very, very big project. Uh, city council, uh, approved a letter of support, uh, just this week to, uh, to take that whole corridor down from four lanes to three lanes. So one, one northbound, one southbound, one common turn lane down the whole center. Um, for those of you that have been around for a while, that happened in Manistee Township, I don't know, thirty, forty, well, probably forty years ago. Thirty-five, forty years ago.
Is, is there going to be any kind of a bicycle lane as part of that study?
There's, um, there's, so the money that we're talking about, uh, the thirty-two million that they've got budgeted will be full reconstruction, curb and gutter, pavement, um, signal upgrades, um, storm sewer upgrades. But it doesn't do a lot of the, it doesn't do sidewalks. It doesn't do bikeways, a lot of those ancillary things. But there's separate grant funds, uh, through the state, available to the state. Um, and they, they've, so they've already kind of put the word in, we're going to be earmarking some of those improvements, so. A lot of the meetings have been joint meetings between Manistee Township, the city and Filer Township. So it hasn't been designed yet, but all of those elements have been requested and, and asked for. Um, you know, you guys have, um, have been working, some of you worked on Jozlin Cove when it was built. It's coming back up again for more work. You know, I recall, um, when that project was going through its PUD and they said, well, we can't put sidewalk up on the highway. First of all, there's nothing that connects to it either way, but the, but the top, the topography doesn't work. And when we built, rebuilt Arthur Street Bolt Launch, we put sidewalk in front of there saying, the city should be the leader in this. We should add sidewalk and then everybody that comes before and after us ought to do the same thing. This actually gives opportunity because if you're going from four lane cross-section to a three lane, it gives some opportunity, so. We certainly will be working with the state to try to get those, those amenities if we can.
Margaret, do you, by any chance, have you increased your employees at the DPW? Do you have all this work that you have?
Just the single parks person.
Just one person?
Yeah.
And all this work is going on with what? What do you have, about eighty people, isn't it?
Excuse me? We have, uh, two salaried people, uh, myself and, and Katie Trevisano. And then there's twenty-five union employees.
Twenty-five?
Yes.
Geez, it's been a while since I've been down there, I guess.
Does that include the summer help?
The summer help, we hire, uh, four to five at the City Marina and then eleven summer employees in the, in the Parks Department. So it gets, gets up to around forty total.
Forty, oh my goodness, yeah.
It's a little short of eighty though.
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry. They do the work of eighty, let me say this.
I, I would agree with you.
Yeah, they do a good job. I, you can tell them that. I see you putting posts at my first.
So.
Project?
Yeah, that, I, I'm really trying to outflank the kids. Um, you know, they're, they just jump that, that, jump the asphalt. They go through the sand. Um, we can't get grass to grow there. So those posts, and they'll be cut, they'll be cut level. Uh, they just, we just installed them today. But we saved the old piling when we redid the City Marina. I kept all those old piling and everybody keeps asking me for them and I said, no, there, there's going to be a use. So we used some in the Disc Golf Park when we built that and then we, we're using those as a barrier. And, um, and I plan to grade that area. We'll use some of our composted topsoil that we make. Well, I think we can topsoil and seed that. And then at Fifth Avenue Beach, um, as you're exiting the parking lot, they're jumping the corner there and that's all sand. So we're going to put in six or eight of those posts to, just, just to protect the assets that we have.
Yeah, good idea.
Well, thank you, Jeff. Any, no, now if there's any questions?
Busy.
I have two questions. Now that, uh, the Catholic school is closed and the recyclable places there, will, will this, who will man that now? The city again?
It's a very good question. Um, so years ago, I'll, I'll give you a little bit of background. Uh, I think it's important. Years ago, we had recycling, we just, the city just did it itself. We had dumpsters. You put your cardboard in and paper in them. Then we had the co-mingle, uh, trailer. Um, probably about four or five years ago, up until about four or five years ago, we didn't pay anything to have paper recycled. It was, it was a valuable commodity. Republic was able to sell it for more than it costs for them to dump it and it didn't cost us anything. And then when China, uh, changed its policies on recycling and imports, then it dropped the value of that commodity down so low and it, it actually increased the processing fees so high. That's what devalued it. Um, then it was costing the city about fourteen thousand dollars a year just to get rid of our, our cardboard. So, uh, after a year or two, um, we went to MCC and said, well, and at the same time, if you remember, city council changed the ordinance and we built, uh, refuse corrals so that we didn't have trash cans out on River Street three times a week. Um, when that happened, it took away the ability for MCC to travel down River Street and pick up all the stores cardboard. So they were like, we just made our lives harder and we use that money to fund class trips. So we said, well, if you want more cardboard, we can, we can partner up together. The whole community will bring all their cardboard right to the trailer. We'll put our co-mingle down there and it worked out well. As their, their, um, as administration has changed and their policies of, internal policies has changed and then a drop off in volunteer support has been getting harder and harder for them. With the school closing, um, that leaves us in a pickle. So the building that's down there, MCC built that with a grant from the state of Michigan. So they're on the hook. If they don't operate that facility for five years, they're going to have to pay that back. Um, we've, we've looked into the city operating it, but I don't think if we're physically there and present and with the mono volume that comes into that trailer, I think it would be a disaster. So, so we're looking, we're exploring different options right now. Um, there's, there's some discussion with PCA about relocating that trailer, maybe to the DPW yard or to our cold storage off, off of Veterans Oak Grove. Um, but I think ultimately the, there's new legislation that's going to push us into curbside recycling. We're going to be required to opt to offer that in the coming years. So we've asked for prices on that and, um, we'll have to let city council evaluate and make a decision which direction we go.
They had to recycle because I had like a toad for a long time.
Yes.
When that all opened up.
Yeah, so there, there was a voluntary.
Down there. I used to go there and now to the school.
There was a voluntary, uh, recycling. You could pay extra and it, you know, they would come to you twice a month, I think it was. But there were less than a hundred residents that enrolled in that. So it was going to drive the costs up so much and Republic said it's not worth it for them to even come and pick up just a hundred. And, um, in my tenure with the city, we've been before council, I think, three times. And the cost of curbside, they just weren't interested in putting that on, on the fixed income residents, so. But I, things are changing, so. I think there will continue to be recycling. What exactly it looks like, I, I couldn't tell you right now.
I have one other question. Um, there's only one sign, hmm, about this big by this big at both First and Fifth Avenue Beach. About dogs on the beach, one sign. How do you go about putting a few more of them up? Because there's always dogs, people with their dogs on the beach. And I said to a woman the other day, I said, you know, there's a sign there. There's no dogs on the beach. She's, I always have my dog on the beach. I said, well, that doesn't make it right. There are signs that say, no dogs on the beach. So I think they need to put another one up there closer to the buildings, you know?
Okay.
Than that one sign. And sec-, my second question is, with the First Street Beach and the parking and the hotel, how do they plan, uh, is there any kind of signage that it's for beach patrons only, the parking? Because it's hard to get a parking place before the hotel down there. How do they plan to, uh?
So by, by ordinance, all of, all pu-, all of our public parking is first come, first served. We, we cannot restrict that to anybody. Um, when, when the hotel was being discussed and kind of negotiated, they put the entrance into the large Bolt Launch parking lot. Um, so if they have overflow, that can be used there. Um, they also contributed the funds to build twenty new parking spaces. And so when we repaved the roadway and, and redid some of the, the parking, um, they paid and, and paid for those twenty-some new parking spaces down there. So there's a net increase of parking. Um, to me, the biggest, one of the biggest benefits was a, was a curb cut into that parking lot. Um, it's a very short walk from that parking lot to go across the street and access the beach. And I'm hoping that over time, more people recognize that and continue to use it. But the other thing that, um, that, that the Hampton Inn has, has said publicly, um, is we have a public restaurant. We have a public patio. And you are more than welcome to come park in our parking lot and grab a drink and walk to the beach. And most of the beast, beach usu- usage is between noon and five. And their patrons leave before eleven and usually come, you know, after four. So they thought that would be a perfect and, and non-confrontational kind of mixed use. Um, and I, I've been, on Memorial Day weekend, I saw they had live music and, and the parking lot at the beach was full of cars and everybody was up having fun with the band, so. So far, it's, it hasn't been an issue. I think fourth of July will be a test.
There's a regulation and it's an older regulation about using that Bolt Launch par- parking for business. And George is aware of it, attorney, and I have a copy somewhere. I'll get you a copy of it. If that is ever used for like the hotel and stuff, that has to go before residents to vote on that.
Okay.
And, uh, and it's never been brought, it was brought up a couple of times, but it just kind of got floated into the clouds. But there is a regulation about using that for hotel parking. And George has a copy of it, the attorney. So that's my only other question, you know, what, if nobody else, city isn't complaining or residents, I don't know how they can change that around or what, but it is a regulation.
Anybody else?
I, I have a couple.
Okay.
I want to thank you for tonight though, Jeff.
Sure.
You, uh, certainly are busy. Um, many, many projects to improve Manistee and we all appreciate it.
Thank you.
But with that said, um. Leave me alone. I know. Um, just, this one's noxious weeds. Couple of things on noxious weeds. Uh, there's a lot of, a lot of lots, I guess, or homes, uh, that they don't cut the grass. I mean, it's past the knees. What, what are we doing to take care of that? And the second part of the question is, uh, the city lots, the dead lots that we have, uh, within the city, the smaller non-violable lots. I have one across the street from me, um, up on Seventh Street where Teasit Davis.
Yeah.
One. Um, what are we doing to combat that?
So there's a noxious weed ordinance.
Yeah.
Just making it very simple. If you've got overgrowth, ten inches or, or higher, you're, you're compelled to take care of that and the city will give you notice. And if you don't, we go in and cut it or have it cut and then you pay a very high amount of money.
Yeah.
And, and it's supposed to be an incentive to do it yourself. We don't want to be the city's landscapers. Um, so that's the process that we follow. Um, as our staff sees them, they report them and we send out letters. As people call and see them, they report it to us. We send out letters. And then there's a lot that come, are coming in through C Click Fix through the app. Um, so those letters go out. I think they have ten days to comply. We go on the tenth day and check it and if they don't, then we, we cut it and send them an invoice.
It's been raining a lot though.
How about the consumer site on the north side by Municipal Down?
Um, that would certainly, certainly have to comply with the ordinance as well. Um, we have to, we have to hit up Jozlin Cove and the railroad, um, you know, all along there. We have to do the, do it all the time.
Ward hardware for one, you'll ward hardware.
Yeah.
Today there's.
Sure. Yeah, so if you guys have those, um, feel free to call, um, and leave a, you can just leave a message, even if Katie doesn't answer. Um, and we send out the letters for those.
Okay, very good. Thank you on those. And then the last one, I, I know you were doing Washington Street. How about Harrison? Cause that's getting beat up too now with the, with the detour. Is that, is there any reconstruction, any plans for that in the future?
Um, we've applied for category F grants for it. Um, and it doesn't come, it doesn't qualify because it doesn't connect straight to US thirty-one. So we've looked, I've looked for grants to try to, um, maybe I'm not, wait, you said Harrison?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was thinking of a separate section. Um, I don't think that's currently in the, in the transportation improvement plan, so it's not in the five years right now.
It's right after you turn off the highway.
Yeah.
Probably within the first fifty yards, it's, there's some moon shots there.
Yeah, there's, there's residents on that street that are advocating each year to us. Um, but like I said, we're, 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 you know, unless more funding is made available, we're, we're trying to match it up to get the biggest bang for our buck and so, um, most of the paving stuff's going to follow the utility work right now.
I'm glad you're doing a weekend because that, that was, that's always been.
Yeah.
Awful street, so. Okay. Uh, if there's any other questions? I, I got just a couple. Um, the, um, the street signs, are they going to sell those? Are you going to have some kind of a, an opportu- opportunity for people to bid on those signs?
The ones that we remove?
Yes, all the old, the old.
Yeah, so in the, in the past, I've, we've collected all those and then every, about every three years, we have an auction and we auction off all the, um, all the vehicles and access equipment. Um, I think we're going to move to, um, a different vendor on that that does monthly auctions.
Okay.
Um, they're just so common now and people can get them online and you don't have to show up anymore. The people, the buyers are just watching these things every month and when there's something they want, they, they submit a bid on it. Um, but I think for something like that, I think we could probably establish a price and just make them available, maybe post them on the website. Cause we were, if I remember, since in the ten years we've been doing this, we were getting thirty, forty bucks for the signs. But a lot of, a lot of residents, um, have nostalgic, you know, ties to those and so they, they always go. And we've got quite a few of them right now.
Okay.
Whenever the, whenever we do these upgrades, I make sure they give them back to us so that there's some opportunity to get it back into the community.
And then, uh, is there a, a project to, uh, uh, repave and restripe the big, uh, parking lot down at First Street Beach?
I've asked for estimates on that and it's over a million and a half dollars to repave it. And that's to crush it in place. So you just li- literally pulverize it in place, regrade it and three inches of new asphalt on it. So that's something I'm going to have to work towards because there's definitely a need for it.
How about restriping? What would just?
We re- we re-stripe it annually.
Because that would help if we reconfigured the striping because right now it's almost all striped for a lot.
Yes.
Large boats and trailers and reality is that's maybe half of that parking lot.
Yeah, if, if you look at the current beach master plans, it actually rotates the orientation of the parking ninety degrees. And, and I push hard for that because all the vehicular parking is, is for the Lions Pavilion and all the events there. And it's just, it wasn't laid out that way.
Right.
The, the ingress and the egress was all for the fish cleaning station and so, you know, we had Hampton put in a new outlet or new driveway on First Street. But when we did the, the loop, we also put one on the. But when we did the loop, we also put one on the exit to the Lions because to me, that makes it easier for people to get in. Yep, can't park here, let's go into the big lot. Then we put a sidewalk that's connecting it. I have tried to restripe over the top of old striping. It makes it extremely confusing. A few years ago, 5th Avenue, we tried to seal coat it, basically paint it black and then restripe over the top of it. That worked for a year and then it all bled through. So I think it's going to take either an overlay or a repave. But that would be my vision is to realign all that and make it. Whenever we design boat launch parking lots, we do the 40-foot stalls for boat trailer. But then you could stripe them in half, so it's a dual purpose. And cars don't feel like they shouldn't, you know, they're swimming in a parking space. And it keeps them orderly, so, yeah. I think that's in the future.
Good.
Well, I want to thank you for mentioning First Street because that's scary to me down on a bike. So I'm glad here it's going to get repaved.
Yes.
Because it's not getting any better. But I'm glad you're going to do that.
That's all I know.
I know with the short staff and all the projects going, it's hard to keep up with everything. But I see the trucks around all the time doing stuff. And the new dog park is really, really being utilized.
Yes. Yeah, it's not quite finished. There's still benches that we've ordered. We've been working with the Chambers Leadership Group. They've been fantastic and very, very proud of the outcome of that. That was cool, very cool.
Jeff, the only other thing that I had was, is part of the 31 study, are they going to look at pedestrian crosswalks? Right now, you have only downtown and there's nothing between First Street and the end of the city. And that's.
There's actually high-vis, what they call high-vis crosswalks at 6th Street. And then what they believe is the largest, the longest crosswalk on a state highway in the state of Michigan is at 9th Street. There's no sidewalks on either side of it.
Right.
And you drive through there, I mean, it's 80 feet long.
And the other side is that, you know, when you're down to one lane, it's going to make it harder because that traffic's going to be closer, right? It's going to be darn near impossible without risking life and limb to get across. And again, everything from the school, in particular 12th Street, is going to be a difficult.
Yeah, there was a corridor study that the city and the townships partnered with M.D. years ago. And so we blew the dust off it and handed it back to them and said, "Make sure you follow your own recommendation." But it's about reducing curb cuts and consolidating and it's about pedestrian crossings and, you know.
And I'm pretty sure people speed up instead of slow down when they see somebody in the crosswalk, especially if they're gray-haired.
I hope you're not talking about me.
I know they had, I had helped work on that survey and that up by the school and family fair. And they were trying to work on an overpass and sidewalks because there's no sidewalks up to the high schools. And that just kind of bit the dust.
Yeah, I'm not sure where that went. I know that they did traffic warrants for a signal at 12th and 31 before the store. We got them to come back and do a warrant study for after. So there's like 11 warrants. Like you have to check the boxes that all of these things are occurring justifies putting in a light. Otherwise, you get more negative than positive. And it didn't meet the warrants then. And with the lower numbers at the schools and MCC closing it, I'd be surprised if it met it again. But I do know that they're rerunning the warrants through the whole corridor.
Well, Jeff, thank you. You've been up there for 35 minutes, so.
Yeah.
One of the longest.
Sorry.
No, no, it was all great. You did a fantastic job and you've educated us, so thank you so much.
You're welcome.
You have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public comments on agenda-related items? Is there anyone in the audience that has anything? No? Okay. New business, 427 River Street. Water, that's what I said. Pardon me wrong.
That's what I said, David.
Is 427 Waters, excuse me. Is there the applicant here?
Nope, I'm just going to be talking about it on my own.
Okay, all right. You're buying it?
No.
With enthroning, Roger.
So we've had some, a couple, just an interested developer that came in and had some good questions and some things that I thought that need to be brought up, talked about. Because I also used it on another building here in Manistee, kind of as an example. So in your packet, you have the 427 Water, a large building that's just right over here for sale. And so some topics that came up with someone purchasing that property is the fact that if they wanted to get, for the price of the building and they wanted to get enough apartments in there and not have it retail, that they would have to go a little bit smaller than the 500 square foot that, or the minimum that they can go right now that's in the ordinance. So just something we were looking at is the first floor, what the size of it is, what the second floor, the size of it is. How many square foot we could get with eight units, seven, six units? Six units, they'd be fine, but then you're talking not enough money for the price that it would cost to build and to create those. The other big issue that we noticed is the parking for that building. And that also goes along with a couple of the other buildings downtown. Of course, you've got off-street parking. Another idea would be possibly a parking lot close by or similar area that either having combined or something brought together, two companies or entities sharing parking or possibly purchasing some parking permits, that type of thing. And also I put in your packet is just right next door to the building. And this one, it's kind of a great picture. But it shows you kind of the space there, too, that maybe we could open that up and offer a couple parking spots, but also there's street parking. So just something that maybe I'd like to bring to your attention that we might need to go a little bit less than the 500 minimum square footage. With that being said, then I sat down with my building inspector, Jerry Blue, and we went over, you know, what is the minimum square footage for the size for a bedroom? What is it for the adults in there? And then also with this building, another thing that kind of came up was just egress windows. So we'd have to see, you know, where you'd have to position the bedrooms so that would be up to code and stuff. So just something I brought up, since we are in such a high need for housing, we need to start thinking outside the box, getting a little creative, thinking about some other things. So I just wanted to bring that attention and share it with you.
I got a question on the left-hand side. Isn't that property part of the?
Yes, yes, it is. So they could.
They could, you could put probably six to eight parking spaces.
We had a plan, we had, years ago, we had a plan for it before. And there was four parking spaces max they could put in.
Really?
Yeah.
Seems like a little bit larger than that.
No, it's just because the.
Well, it looks it, but. So by any way, who, what is the price of this building? That's the problem.
South as you think it does.
The price of the building, I don't know what it's up for sale. Do you happen to know, Andrew, what the price?
It was on the market for $200,000. And then sellers coming down from that.
Okay.
Or only slightly. I think it's now $197,000.
Okay.
It's one, I looked it up last night.
Okay.
So I mean, they're trying to break it up or they can break it up for apartments if they spend $197,000 to build it or to buy it.
Yes, possibly, yeah. And not have retail, or I mean, not retail, but not have office space, yeah.
Well, if everybody remembers with the brewery project, they wanted to come in at, I think, 550. And our minimum was 600, I think.
At that time.
600, 620, something like that. And talking with Teresa, they want to come down to, with eight units, 416 square feet. I, personally, I don't want to go to. I think we've lowered our standards enough. Go to 500?
Well, all I can think of is the article they had in New York where the apartment sizes now are 150 square feet.
But that's in New York.
I know, I know, but it's.
We're apples and grapes.
Does the ordinance require, or can you have a studio?
That's a good question for that. I think it's still like a certain amount of space for sleeping. So, yeah, I'd have to get to the, with the building inspector on that. Yeah, they could be studio.
You know, 400 square foot wouldn't be all that small.
That's a big studio.
But the studios.
They have studio apartments, almost.
We were, that's when we took it down to 500.
500?
Yeah.
Yep, that's where it's at now. So just for this one example, the eight units would be 416 square foot. Seven units would be 475. The six, which would, the person or the owner or they would only come out, what, six units, 554 square foot? But they'd probably not even break even. So that was kind of just the talk about that. But again, we need housing.
We need the housing, but we just, if we go to that route, we're continually lowering the square footage. So and we know what happened a couple of months ago with tiny houses coming in.
What happened?
They wanted to build a duplex at 343 square feet, too.
I thought they were just talking about.
Well, that's, their plan was, they wanted to put up on Kosciusko Street.
Yeah, yeah.
That duplex, so.
I mean, this building's, you know, been, we've had several people come into town to look at this building before this gentleman bought it.
Right.
And they ran into the same problems.
Yeah.
And I'm with Mark. I can't see living in a 416 square foot apartment. And did he give a price point for that apartment size?
It would be at the AMI. It would be that or a little bit above, but it'd just be average for average income or moderate income. Yeah, it'd be affordable. I mean, but another thing we need to think about, too, is we want to get younger people in. And we hired new, in the fire department, we've hired new in the police department. These people can't even live in the city, most of them not even in the county. So to try to get that. So, nope, this is why I just bring it up, bring it to you guys' attention, the things that I'm hearing and just sharing that and.
Well, we appreciate that.
Yeah.
You know, maybe they come back and refigure what they're doing, so.
Yep.
Are we completed with that one, Teresa?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The next one is 126 Franklin Street, Ashley Conger?
Daycare.
Daycare. She's in?
Yep, you can come on up.
Yes, please come to the podium. Name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Ashley Conger and my address is 126 Franklin Street over by the Wagner Center. And I have been getting all my ducks in a row to open up a childcare home. And the more I looked into it, the more I thought it would make more sense, not just for me and my family, but the community as well, to extend it to a group childcare home. So instead of having six children, there would be up to 12 children. And the more I looked into it, I found out that in order to do that, I need to have, I believe, a special use permit to have up to 12 kids. And the fee for that is $1,000 to apply. And I wanted to come and find resources or find out if it's a possibility to have either some kind of waiver on that fee or to lower that fee or to have a payment plan or just trying to figure out how to get resources to make it possible because it's really the one thing standing in my way. I have all the inspections and the background check and everything ready to go. It's just that letter I need from the city that says it's okay.
I know there's a $1,000 fee. Now, a couple of years ago, a lady on Cornell opened up a daycare. And she was charged $1,000 for that, for the fee. She paid it upfront. I can't foresee waiving any of that or reducing it because it's not fair to that individual to do that. If we did that, we would catch hell, so. Now, payment plan, that's not us, I don't believe. If indeed the city would do something like that, not sure. But I guess that would be up to Mr. Bradford and the city manager to do that.
Can I ask a question?
I'm not done yet here, so. So going, I would love to say yes, if we could, but this committee cannot, so. Marlene?
I'm on the Board of Council on Aging Wagner Center. And we've been approached by several different people wanting to rent the back priest quarters for daycare. Are you one of the people who have checked that out at our center?
I haven't, no. I wasn't even, like, I have thought about, you know, there's probably maybe some churches or areas that would do like an actual daycare center, which allows a lot more than 12 kids, I believe. For me, I'm just starting with baby steps. Because I know that to have a daycare license for a center, it's a lot more money and a lot more regulation. And so it's a great idea, though. I've also thought that the Catholic school would be a good place for something like that just because there's such a need for it. Especially for younger than three. Right now, we have the huge deficit in zero to three because there's so many preschools three and up. But there aren't really a lot of options for people with really young toddlers and babies.
And the requirement, I understand, for zero to three, you have to have a lot more childcare providers, right?
Yeah, depending on the age, it's a ratio changes. I think for under 18 months, it's one to four. And then over, it goes up. But there's a chart that shows you how many of each you can have per person. But right now, it's, I think, two under 18 months and then four over would be the one way to do it. And then one to six adult ratio for any. And then some places, if you've been established for over, I think it's two years, then you can ask for an additional one child per adult. So you could go from six to seven or from 12 to 14.
Mark, play good.
Yes, go ahead.
So as I understand it, you've got all your ducks in a row. You've got the workers to go, the neighbors aren't going to complain. All you're worried about is $1,000?
The application fee, I think it's the application fee is $1,000.
But everything else is good?
Everything else is ready to go and turned in. And so I was just trying, like, I'm new at all this stuff. And so I'm like, what can I do? And thankfully, Teresa put me up here tonight to kind of just reach out. If you guys have suggestions or other places. I am talking with the Manistee, it's slipping my mind.
Foundation?
Community Foundation, yeah. Manistee County Community Foundation. And they're talking with each other this week to kind of see what, I think they're going to be having some funding or some, something to support childcare in the community. And so I'm waiting to hear back from them. But this happened first, so I'm like, well, we'll see what happens and what resources are available.
Do you have a waitlist already of parents?
Not yet because I didn't want to promise something that I couldn't deliver. I don't want someone, because I know as a mom, how valuable childcare is. And I know what it feels like when it falls through or it's not available. So I thought, I want to be licensed and then I can say yes to people because I don't want them to be like, oh, childcare starts in September. And they'd be like, well, actually, I'm going to have to push it out a couple of months because then they're like, what am I going to do?
Yeah, I'm just curious if you had maybe a list of parents or people who might be interested. You might be able to start like a GiveSendGo or GoFundMe, kind of crowdfund some of that money.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. We've actually today been going around the neighborhood and selling donuts for daycare. And so, but I know that's a small amount so far. But we're like, this is the way to kind of get the ball rolling. And so that's a great idea. And I know that I've been talking with some other childcare providers and one of them up on M-55. She has a waitlist of 15 people right now. And I think there's more waitlists around, too. And so we're going to try to work together to kind of help fill those needs.
Have you tried working with the Armory? Have you, have you tried working with the Armory?
I haven't talked with them, yet. I have talked with um, what is it called? United Way. They were the ones that guided me to the Community Foundation. And then I've talked with, um, let's see, the Central Wellness. And they're the ones that, they're like, just call the mayor. I'm like, I don't, you know, if I can do that.
Tell them Mark said.
Well, I mean, we, we do have a dire need of daycare. And I know, talking with Stacy a couple of weeks ago, um, you know, they're, the chamber is talking. And I may be stepping out of bounds here, Matthew, but um, that they're trying to come up with an idea for daycare. I don't know if, working with the chamber, uh, if there's any type of funding through them. So, um, maybe those.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I, I think if you get your business plan, especially with the foundation, you'd probably have something going that way. They're, they're pretty good.
Yeah. So, once she does, or um, if she gets the funding or the fees to be paid for, she'll just have to fill out the application. Then again, it's gonna come to you because the, it has to go around um, the area where she lives just to give everybody a chance to know that it's gonna be coming up and then she'll be back in with you. And then at that time, if, when she does come up with the money, we'll just kind of put up um, a small business plan or something else just to show you. Um, because even with the state, she has to show them what she would already have ready, you know, if she needs to have a fence or not. And if she does, where it's gonna go. And just because you guys would all be interested, making sure that she's got the safety and maybe just a couple of pictures and ideas, so then you can see that too. And then the residents are able to come up and say if they're for it or against it or that they're really rooting for it. So those others will go out to you and then that'll be in front of you. Yep.
So the, the radius is three hundred feet.
Yep.
Okay. Good to know, yeah.
Yep.
Do you have a preference for the, for you, the kids that you want to take care of?
I have two young children, uh, one and two. And so, you know, any, I think for them, any time like probably from zero to five, six would be. You know, I think around six, seven, you just start going to school anyway.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
But she already has somebody in mind that she'd like to work with, you know, that's already said that they could work and help. So, I know that she's already got a lot of things in line and ready, so.
That sounds like it.
Yep. But I could be willing to talk to Ed Bradford or to ask the city um, manager and see if that we could do maybe half now and half later, so I can do that.
Great.
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea.
Any other questions? Well, we certainly wish you the best of luck and the best, so.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, moving along to old business, um, grant, housing readiness incentive grant, plan RFP bids.
Yes, so in front of you, I've um, put together a request for proposal score sheet for all of you. And I put them in alphabetical order. So at the top, left-hand side, you'll see that McKenna would be up first and there is a representative. And then the next would be Network Northwest. And then we have Spicer Group and then last would be Williams and Works. So then on each one of them, um, under the section Statement of Work, I did put in there their experience um, with where they've worked with master plan. And then underneath that, other work experience, then below that, what their cost came in. And so then you can see the available points over on the right-hand side. So, I thought would maybe help each other out. You could do that scoring and we could kind of tally it up afterwards. Or you guys just come to an agreement and talk amongst yourselves to decide. But I'd really like to get this moving, decide on somebody tonight. We've got four great ones that came in. All of them have been in your packet for all of you to review. And um, we can see and have the representative from McKenna come up, please. Thanks.
McKenna?
Hello, Jeff Kiesler from McKenna. And I'd be happy to do a little intro about our company or answer questions, whatever, whatever the commission prefers.
If you could just review your company, please.
Sure. Um, I'm in our Grand Rapids office. We have three offices, one in Kalamazoo and our main office in Northville, which is in the Detroit area. We do a ton of work on the lake shore, um, which is where we like to be. We are in communities from Benton Harbor to Luddington right now, currently, um, working on projects and many in between. Um, and we, we love you guys, love your community and would love to be uh, here doing work as well. Love your downtown. Uh, you guys, I'm sure are very proud of it, but you definitely should be if you're not. Um, it's beautiful, historic. Um, I like the, uh, especially the corner at TJ's Pub. I'm gonna like tell people about that little pedestal thing. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll be using that as an example. But um, we think that you guys have a bright future. Um, and I think some of the things that we would like to maybe focus on are not so much downtown, but maybe more like the downtown edges. Streets like Division Street or North Washington, as you're leaving downtown, those sort of drop off a little bit. Um, we would love to be able to take those areas, focus in on them, um, maybe re-envision what could be there. I would love to see, you know, some murals uh, on the buildings in downtown. I don't know what you guys have for like ordinance requirements for that kind of thing. But um, we would love to help, uh, you know, get some public art going on and, and murals, um, which we, we do in a lot of communities. And then, you know, good old things like connecting uh, the town to the lake shore through bike lanes or things like that. We, we love to, to do that kind of planning as well. So, I'm really excited to be here just to, um, just to be able to meet you all and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Annie, Roger?
Uh, at this point, no questions that I can see. No, you're uh, definitely a good organization, but uh, amongst everybody else is a good organization. So, no, I don't really have any question. Thank you for the good remarks about the city.
Yep.
We appreciate that. No, I'm good, Mark.
Okay, thank you. Marlene? Nothing? Cheryl?
I grew up in several of the Chicago Land Silvers that, that are listed here, so I'm, I'm
Yeah.
Interested in, in the bicycle and pedestrian uh, plans. Plans part of it because I, I know what they have there.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, a natural fit for a lake shore community to have those amenities. They're very expensive and they take a long time to build out. But um, getting them in your master plan, um, getting them mentioned as goals can help to seek grants uh, for, for those things if you have them in there.
Thank you.
So, um, it, what kind of experience do you have in working with um, aged properties? Uh, like we have in Manistee. We have an abundance of, of homes that are a hundred years old and over.
Sure. Um, we, we are, uh, well, we have quite a bit of experience with that. But specifically in Luddington, we're helping them update their zoning ordinance right now. And we're doing what's called a Unified Development Ordinance, which is your code of ordinances and your zoning ordinances in one giant document. Um, and as you can imagine, Luddington has, you know, a lot of, uh, we've helped them to build in a lot of regulations and protections for historic homes. Um, the big question is, what happens if a historic home burns down? Then what do you do? Well, we've kind of built in some protections and regulations that if something is built in, in that place, it has to still retain that historic character. So you would have to use materials similar to what's on the street and have a design similar to what's on the street, that kind of thing, so.
We've had similar challenges, so.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I get a little bit checking around and stuff and uh, talk to the folks in Granville. They're very pleased and I understand you guys are actually doing part of your planning commission stuff for the time being.
We do a, a lot of that work. Um, I'm, I'm sure that everybody else here is fantastic as well. But we, we, we tend to, um, you know, go into a community for maybe a master plan or a park and rec plan. And then we morph into doing what we call CS work for them or um, community service work for them. Where we'll review uh, projects that come in and come and give the report at the planning commission meeting. Um, I, uh, yesterday, I, I, right now, I'm working in Comstock Township, which is down by the Kalamazoo area. And I go to the office, I pick up the phone, I say, hi, this is Jeff, Comstock Township, may I help you? And help them with their planning and zoning. So we, we really, you know, we really do the full range of, of work. Um, and, and uh, in addition to what I call the CS work.
Yeah, I understand you also, you said the southeast corner of State, uh, former Oxford County City Commissioner told me that you used to work with you guys.
Yes, sir. We've done a lot of work. And I, not me personally, but our, our firm has done a lot of work in, in that area, yeah. We like, we, we like puzzles, honestly, and, and communities are puzzles. There's, there's, you know, great things about all of them and there are things that we wish weren't there. And, and so we love to just kind of work with the community and sort things out. We are not the expert on Manistee. You guys are the experts on Manistee. But we have great background in planning tools that we can use to kind of help you build your vision, so. We're, we're proposing to do, um, just quickly, we're proposing to do four uh, project management meetings with the planning commission. So we would come and have something to report on in the process. And then ideally, we would have some public engagement at that meeting. Um, so we would get the word out to the public, uh, let them know that we're, you know, gonna be working on some issue and we'll agree on that. And then turn those meetings into like a report out and then also public engagement. Um, we're proposing to do two meetings with the city council. Um, and uh, also typo, I apologize, but uh, one visioning session with the planning commission. So what does that look like? Um, that would be where we would come in with some topics already preset. We may even have some boards with us or some maps with us to, to do different exercises. Um, and don't throw me out of here, but you know, one, one thing we might talk about is we may take a map and spend thirty minutes and have the DPW staff come and say, what would happen if we did two-way traffic on River Street? What would that look like? What would be the pros? What would be the cons? I ask you not to throw me out of here.
That, that actually has been discussed.
I am sure that has. Or uh, it, looking at Division and saying, you know, how can we reinvent this streetscape? So that it's more inviting and people kind of wander around that corner from River. Getting into a, some more specific stuff and, and hashing out those ideas with you guys. Um, and then last, at least, uh, the public hearing meeting with the PC. Um, that would be, um, when we've got uh, that, that draft, we would come here and present it to you guys. We would hear from the public, um, any of their concerns with the draft and then move forward with adoption, so. That's kind of what we're thinking. I don't want to take up all of the time if you guys don't have any more questions. But um, I can also leave some business cards.
Yeah, good, uh, Mark, Mark, could I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Oh, I'm sorry.
I have to go through Mark. Mark, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Well, I mean, you have a, a timeline here of seven to nine months. So is that basically what you've experienced in the past or is it, you know, for seven to nine months, perceivably, we could get it done almost by the end of the year?
It's, it's pretty ambitious. Um, and um, we were, we are willing to, the proposal is, is not us telling you guys this is what we're willing to do and nothing else. We really will flex with you. If you want to add another public engagement, if you want to cut out some money somewhere, uh, we can negotiate that. And the timeline is, it's a little ambitious, but, um, but we could extend it out to ten months or something or ten or twelve. And give us a little more time to kind of um, chew on things a, a little bit.
That's not a good idea. We start chewing and we keep chewing and it never gets done.
If you, Jeff, if you do extend, is that, is there
No.
Um, more dollars coming out?
No, sir.
No, no more dollars?
Nope, the cost for the, the cost for the project is included in the proposal.
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, and that, uh, unless you were to say, you know, we want to do two more public engagement events or we want to do this extra study over here.
Oh.
Um, but no, the cost is fixed. Um, and yep, that's, that's included.
Um, I do have a couple of questions. This will be for Williams and Works also, so.
All right.
First one, what is the greatest accomplishment? Uh, you and your team have worked on and what is your, what are you most proud of?
Um, geez, that's a really good question. I think, um, for me, my most, my most proud uh, was we did a, uh, helped do a short-term rental ordinance uh, update for this village of Sagatuck. And um, it was, it was uh, quite something. We had, I think, a hundred and seventy-five people at the public engagement event. Um, we had lots of different uh, tools and stations set up. But then we had in the, like, the high school auditorium or auditorium, we just had this rolling comments microphone. Uh, people could come up and they'd share their comments. And it was, it was fantastic planning. Because you really, you had people who want to protect their beautiful lake shore town and don't want people from Chicago coming in every weekend partying, you know? Um, and, and you also have people that are like, we can purchase this dream home because it's a short-term rental. And they're, they're competing interests. Um, so I think, I think our work there, um, you know, I'm, I'm really proud of that work. Uh, because, you know, we, we were able to get some great conversations going with people that were pretty opposed to each other. Um, and, and come up with a good, good ordinance to uh, protect both the homeowner and, and the village too. So, um, that's, that's probably one that I can point to especially, yeah.
All right. Uh, the last, second and last, uh, give us an example of jurisdiction, like the city of Manistee you have worked with. And what did your firm do for them?
Guys, City of Holland is pretty impressive. And every time I go there, I learn something from them. And their citizens come into the open houses using planning terms and understanding planning stuff. Um, they're fantastic. And we've done a ton of work in uh, Holland. We've done a UDO for them. Uh, that was our, kind of our first on the west side, um, which, if you ever want to check that out, it's, it is just exactly how you want a zoning ordinance to look. It's got beautiful color diagrams and showing you where the corner lot is and everything. I mean, very detailed, very good work. Uh, but we did a, a master plan update for them too, which was just updating the demographics, updating the goals. And uh, but in that area, Holland Township as well. Um, and we did uh, a Eighth Street Corridor Subarea Plan. So they have an area of town that is sort of off, right off of the main drag. Um, and it's become over time like a mixture of like fast food drive-throughs, industrial, old homes and random, just random. Uh, we helped them create a, a plan for H Street. There would be, you know, new, um, new sidewalks and streetscape. Um, and they're, they're building apartment buildings, modern-looking apartment buildings in this sort of, you know, changing and uh, streetscape. Uh, that's why for me, you know, I, I see North Washington and I'm like, that's where I want to be. You know, like that, that, it isn't, it isn't a nice or kind of a place or anything for me. It's like opportunity, you know, to extend downtown and, and make it amazing. So, um, Holland, Holland is great. Um, we have done quite a bit of work in Montague, um, which is by Whitehall and Muskegon. Um, Luddington is really great. And we didn't do their master plan, but we've had a chance to really, you know, with Luddington, because of their distance, we did a, like a two-hour virtual meeting with them every month for about a year to go over, you know, now we're gonna talk about parking and now we're gonna talk about housing and, uh, really working through the ordinance to hash things out. Um, but they're, they're a great group of people and, and very smart and very talented. And yeah, just, uh, I would say, I'm sure you guys are the same way and, and yeah, it'd be a pleasure to work with you as well.
Well, the last question, which is not a scripted one by any means, but how, with these community events that you do have, how do you bring the people in? How can you?
Good question.
Because sometimes here in Manistee, you don't get a lot of attendance in.
Yep. Uh, there's various Yep. Uh, there's various ways that we use to get the word out. Um, but we would be, you know, giving you guys messaging to put on your Facebook page and probably your website, uh, as well. Um, we would, if, if this is probably an option, we would, uh, probably mail out a postcard, which would be an additional cost for the, the cost of the printing and mailing. Um, but, uh, we would send out a postcard with a invitation to the, um, to whatever event we're doing. Or maybe if there's a couple, we would put a couple of dates on there. And we would have a QR code linked to our survey and people can take that as well. Um, one way that's super effective, um, that we found is, uh, like when township supervisors or city managers, if they have like the, the messaging system and you message people, um, that can be huge. Um, and then like some of our best events have been just stationing a table at the Heritage Days or whatever and just pulling people in and talking to them. Um, so, yeah, I mean, there's, there's numerous ways that we can kind of get the word out. Um, printing out flyers as well, um, which are low-cost and we can put them up, or you guys can put them up around town. Um, and that, and again, we put the QR code for the survey on everything we put out. Um, but, yeah, various ways to get the word out because there's no one way to do that anymore, you know?
How many projects do you have right now going?
Myself personally or our office?
Your, your office.
Our office, um, geez, I, I would have to make a list. I am managing about four or five projects myself right now.
Okay.
Um, three, uh, lots of them are sort of coming, uh, to their end and I'm going to be starting new ones as well, so. Yep. But we have, we have a good team. Um, we have a lot of resources with our team, so, um, we, we tap into that and try to do our best work.
Marco, could I?
Yes, go ahead. No, go ahead, go ahead.
Uh, would we have a dedicated person to deal with or?
It'd be me.
Oh, geez.
What's your favorite pub?
No, I was just wondering that, you know, so you're not talking with somebody else every time you talk on the phone?
Nope, it would be, um, it would be me.
Oh, okay.
Coming up here and also me reaching out to the contact person.
Yeah.
Yep. And then, uh, for events, like if we do engagement events, we would have a team come.
Sure. Okay. No, that's it. Thanks, Bart.
Okay. Any other additional questions for Jeff?
All right. I'm gonna, could I just pass these to you?
Yep, yep, to me. That'd be great.
Any other questions, just reach out.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh, the next one is Networks Northwest. Doesn't look like anybody has, uh, shown.
Nope, no representative for, uh, Networks Northwest.
And they were invited to?
Yes, they were. Yep, twice. Yep.
Okay. All right. Um, so how do you want to tackle that one, Teresa?
Um, I could just quickly just go over, um, so at the top, we see that the statement of experience with their master plan. They've done Manistee and Benzie County, so they've done their master plan. The township of Dixon, Mayfield, Blair, and is it pronounced Elmira or Elm?
Elmira, yep.
Elmira, okay. Yep. Some other things that they have worked on is the recreational plan, a joint zoning ordinance and economic development and subdivision area plan. They came in right, um, at the cost thirty-three thousand. They've not worked with redevelopment-ready communities. They, I received it all on the deadline and their timeline is nine to twelve months. And then again, you had their paperwork in their, in your packet to review, so.
I got a question on the redevelopment community. All of those people worked in Manistee. Uh, almost their entire staff worked in Manistee.
Right, but they did not, that was one of the questions I had asked and they did not comment or they did not highlight it that I saw, but, but I didn't know.
And how, you know?
Yeah.
I think maybe because since they've been with Networks Northwest.
Northwest has not, yeah. Yep.
Because I know Rob and Mike.
Oh, right. Yes, that's right.
And Zach or?
Zach's, Zach's long gone.
Yeah.
He's been long gone. You were at Colorado.
Okay.
A long time ago.
Um, I think it's because.
Yeah.
You want my view on this?
Sure. I mean, yeah, you guys need to talk amongst yourselves and see if that's, uh...
My view anyway is, um, you know, they don't bother to show up.
Yeah.
It's like a, just like having somebody come here wanting a special use or something that doesn't show up.
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, what we do is we table.
Yep.
Um, if, if they really don't want to do work for the city, I would just, just come.
Agreed.
Unimportant enough to show up.
Unimportant enough, okay.
Or at least contact you saying why they can't show up tonight, schedule another night if they can.
And I did not hear back from them.
Not a, not a word?
Nope.
You did your homework of reaching out to people?
Yep.
I mean, there's, you, you can't babysit, so.
Hey, that girl's got a babysitting business.
Yeah.
Wrong type, Rog. So, um, you know, basically, with this, I would just table it and, and, and not work, not go through this with them, for them.
Yep. I, I agree. It's, yeah, it's an unfair playing field.
It's, it's, it's not professional.
Yep.
Yeah.
And that, and if, hopefully if they realize that they're, if, if the next time, if they don't make it, then we're just basically saying they're not interested.
Right.
Identify that.
Yep, so just, they're done.
I agree.
Okay. Uh, so we'll move on to Spicer Group.
Spicer Group.
Yep, and Spicer Group, um, apologized. They were not able to attend tonight. Um, and they actually called me. I got a phone call from Ann and I got a phone, uh, phone call from Sean. Um, there has been some family emergency with one of them, so that was, you know, obviously excused and stuff. Um, but I do want to share that Spicer is right now currently working on the Beach Master Plan. And that is going fantastic. And of course, we know Spicer is local. Um, they are representing their engineering firm, um, that we work with them with the city. Um, been very happy with them. So I want to, of course, give them the same opportunity here too. So the statement of experience with the master plan with Spicer Group is Huron, I don't know how to pronounce it, Arne?
Arneck.
Arneck County. So Huron County and Arneck County. They have worked with the Village of Peck, Bangor Township, and Montrose Charter Township. And then they have lots of other work experience with, uh, Manistee Beach Master Plan. They've done urban design, parking wrecks, mapping, survey, community planning. They've worked with DDAs, pathway and trails, and watershed management. Um, they came up a little under budget by six hundred and fifty dollars. They have worked with redevelopment-ready communities. They've received it on deadline and their timeline is eleven months, so.
I feel the same thing with this company, even though they're here and they've done work. If they have enough employees, somebody could have represented them.
Well.
To table that one with the other one.
That, uh, the feelings of the commission, that they, they have not shown, that, that we table it?
Table, I, I would table all four, I would, yeah, I would table. I would just table all of them, give them one more try, set up a, another time to review this. And then if, and if they don't show, then, you know.
I, I understand, but we have two.
Two that are presenting.
Two presenters tonight.
And we don't.
And that, to me, that's not, that's not fair.
Yep.
No, that's true.
They came from downstate.
Yeah, they did.
Present. Um, we have one that's local. Yes, maybe there were some issues. Uh, the other one, basically local too, they did not show.
Yep.
The, the one thing that I will say about Spicer is, um, in some of the meetings, um, with Cynthia, um, she was, and, and the Beach Master Plan, uh, she and I were talking about us redoing the master plan. And she, um, agreed with me that the Beach Master Plan should be attached to the City Master Plan, which I don't think it currently is.
No, it is not.
Um, and I think that, that was a good idea that, that she and I were talking about. So that's all I'm going to say about Spicer. So, uh, it is unfortunate that they, these two companies did not come.
So that, um, so with that said, thank you, Pam. What do we, what do we want to do with this, with Spicer?
I'd like to table.
Well, um, really can't table, can we?
No, well, I, like the first one, um, I think Teresa's gone out of her way to put this information together. She, we did have two that showed up. Um, I, I don't think it's in our best interest to put it off for another full month.
Right.
No. I agree.
And it'd be unfair to the ones that did show up.
Exactly.
True.
Yes. Um, so we, uh, you know, Spicer's local, they, you know, graded out pretty well here. At least in my eyes. Um, but just bugging me that you don't show up. Yeah, right. So, uh, we will move on.
Yeah, how will be your meetings then?
We will move on and we will go to Williams and Works.
Williams and Works.
Thank you.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tanya De Oliveira. Forgive the symptoms. I sound much worse than I actually am, so, um, apologize for that. Um, so with that, I'm going to, I'm not sure how you guys would like to start, but, um, that's who I am. And let me know how I can answer any questions you have.
Uh, tell us about Williams and Works. We, now, the city has done some previous with Williams and Work. Um, maybe Roger, you're probably a good judge of this, ten years ago plus, um, they were working on our master plan.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we didn't have any issues. Oh, it worked.
Two thousand sixteen?
I would say fifteen somewhere.
It wasn't, it was a mile back as my.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
For them.
Yeah, I remember. Yeah. Um, but yes, please.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, Commissioners. Um, like I said, my name is Tanya De Oliveira. I am a project manager and planner with Williams and Works. I'm also would be your point of contact, um, for everything related to the master plan. I've been in communication a little bit with Teresa over the course of this, just asking some more questions, trying to get some clarification and just better information. Um, it's been great to speak with her and just chat with her a little bit. So a little bit about us. So we are a multidisciplinary, multi-generational firm. Um, we do not only master planning, community planning, but also have engineers and, um, landscape architect as well as surveying. We actually put in for the DDA streetscape plan, as I understand that it was, and, um, disappointed we weren't selected. But we're thrilled to have another opportunity to try to do work again in Manistee, so very excited to put this proposal together. Uh, we have one office. Um, we're a small, but I'd say we're an ambitious group, about forty people total in our firm. Um, so when we have questions about, um, you know, something that's maybe a little bit outside the planning realm, it sounds like your Public Works Director is, uh, fantastic. You guys have a ton of stuff going on. It was impressive to hear how he's pulling together resources. You know, he knows all the funding streams and the word how to get grants from the DNR or MDOT. Um, I too, we can kind of just go down the office, um, and, you know, ask the engineers that we've got, the civil engineers, our water engineers. We have a survey and question about boundaries or that kind of thing. We can talk with, um, our surveyors as well. Um, and our landscape architect, she is fabulous as well. So, um, we've, and we've been in existence for more than twenty years. We actually go back a hundred years as well. The company was bought out and then a small group of people said, "We like to do things a little bit more than just work our tails off, like, you know, for eighty hours a week. We want to have a nice, healthy work-life balance." Um, so that's who the firm is. We do work, um, primarily in West Michigan, except for our surveyors. They go all across kind of the Midwest. Um, but we serve communities up and down the state, on the coast, um, kind of all the way over to Lansing and sometimes a little bit further. We've done work, um, we're doing work right now that's going down, all the way down to the border with, um, Indiana. We've done, uh, work as well up in, uh, Lenoir, um, Leonel County, Traverse City area. We'd like to do more up here. That's why, again, we applied for this, uh, project as well, having another opportunity. Um, more about us, we're, we work mostly in person, so if we have questions, we're just constantly bouncing ideas off each other. Uh, we're multi-generational, so we have a lot of energy and enthusiasm, um, and a lot of new, um, stuff that's coming from folks who are younger in the office, maybe a little bit fresher out of school. And we also have a lot of folks who are experienced, have grayer hair, they've been around the block a few times. And so we have a nice balance in terms of kind of the energy and wisdom, um, kind of together. Um, and we just, I don't know, we also get along really well with each other. So, um, that's, I'd say, a little bit of an overview about us generally. Um, I can speak more about planning, um, as well, uh, but I don't want to talk a lot. We've already gone on quite a bit, so.
That's why we love to hear you talk. Um, so, I mean, with that, um, is there any questions? Start with Roger. Do you have something?
Uh, no, the only concern I have, I, you're, you would be the first contact person. Again, they have to meet, set up for meetings with you.
Yep, yep. I'm, I would handle absolutely everything, you know, meetings, bills. You got a question, I'm assume, because the Planning Commission, I'm assuming Teresa would kind of, you know, you'd work through Teresa. So I would be chatting with her, phone, email, um, you know. I like to be available. And email is sometimes convenient, but also something that takes twenty minutes to write can be a five-minute conversation. So I understand, you know, the balance of approach there. Um, so in terms of all that, yeah, I mean, I have a, I, also, we have a team, just like McKenna does, of a lot of experienced planners, um, to be able to pull ideas from. So if it's not in my area of expertise, there's other planners in the office that, you know, we can kind of share ideas from, um, and build in that kind of way. But you'll be dealing with me a hundred percent.
Okay. No, that's about it, Marco.
Okay. Marlene?
Where's your office set up?
In Grand Rapids.
Right down the street, basically.
Yeah, it was a lovely drive up here. I've, I've been up here times before, but it is, it is a nice drive.
Nice place to live.
Yes.
How many, uh, active master plans are you working?
So me pers, like me personally, how many master plans do I have right now? I, I actually have, I have two that are like just about ready to be adopted and so basically all but wrapped up. I have three other ones that are, um, nearing the time when the plan would be, um, compiled as a draft and then that's out for public comment. Um, so, you know, that means, I guess, I've got about four or five master plans together that are kind of winding down as well. Um, and I know that our timeline is proposed a little bit longer. We move at the pace, uh, that is the pleasure of the Planning Commission. So if we want to move it, we can absolutely do that. Um, but we also find kind of a one-month pace per kind of chapter or topic is a good palatable, um, pace. One, you have other things that you might be doing during a Planning Commission meeting. Two, if the public wants to come out and they want to hear what's going on, well, if there's been one or two meetings and the plans, you know, most of the way written, the public might say, "Well, hey, we haven't had a chance." Even though the meetings are probably published online and the agendas are there and so on and so forth. Um, so we can certainly shorten that up. However, I will say we need that sixty-three day public comment period. So that is why at the end of our timeline, it says that it's longer because in our full timeline, we count from the day that we would start till the plan is adopted. So, you know, if you took out those sixty-three days, the timeline, you know, could look shorter. Um, but again, I would be happy to move at the pleasure of the pace of the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pam?
Um, I was just curious, um, the other companies that we worked with. Um, you've got on here that, um, the optional tasks and, and that's the communities or workshops.
Other engagement.
Yeah. Um, those are additional expenses to the twenty-eight seven fifty or?
No, so, um, it would be, so I was talking with Teresa and I was just kind of saying, you know, how, you know, are you guys know that you want to do a, you know, want to do the engagement that you, that's outlined in the RFP? You want to do a survey, you want to do the visioning sessions. And she's like, "Well, or you can also show us, you know, what, what are some things that you suggest?" And so what those options are is that, um, I think I tried to calculate the math out. If you chose two options, it would come up to right around the thirty-three thousand amount. So, I mean, if you picked more than two, yes, because I was trying to put together a scope of work that would show that, one, we can absolutely do what was outlined in the RFP in terms of a survey and the visioning sessions. Um, or if you guys were interested in doing something else, again, um, as, as Representative McKenna talked about, you go out to where the people are. Uh, we also have had great success. And, you know, you can try to get people here. Um, I actually have been doing that a lot lately in terms of following up with emails and phone calls, putting in the time to try to get people to show up. And it, I have been, it has been successful. It has been good to do that. However, um, it's also advantageous to go where people are already at. They're in a good mood. They're having a good time and they're walking by and, you know, "Hey, can, can you..." However, it's also advantageous to go where people are already at. They're in a good mood, they're having a good time and they're walking by and, you know, hey, can, you know, can we chat with you? And it might be a minute and we might be talking to them for seven and we could have activities that will be like the minute long, you know, they're going on their way, you know, okay, we give our input. Or other things too that are a little bit more engaging that people can spend more time on. So that's what that is. That's not a, it's only, it's only additional if you want it to be, excuse me. But I also understood when Teresa was saying, you have thirty-three thousand to the dollar and not more. So, you know, I was trying to keep respectful of that.
So with, with, and I'm sorry, Nick. For those, those. How would I want to say? Was it? Not the optional, but the, going outside a little bit with, you know.
We call them pop-up, the pop-up planning events.
So we have the Fourth of July is our biggest event in Manistee and that's about a week long.
Oh, okay.
And then we don't have, really have any festivals in the summer.
Sure.
Other than.
You have Sleigh Bell and you have Labor Fest.
Labor Fest.
Is Labor Fest Labor Day?
Weekend, Labor Day.
Yeah.
Weekend, like. But Sleigh Bell is a winter time, large winter time event.
It's, it's the December Fourth.
It's in the winter time, yeah.
It is.
Okay.
So, I mean, I just, if you came up in August and had something like a pop-up, you know, how would you attract the people?
So, again, very similar to, to McKenna in terms of, right, there's not like any sort of necessarily super secret sauce. However, our approach is such that we would work with you to put together a, a flyer that would, could be printable, right? Not everybody exists in the digital realm. There are some people who are not comfortable, they don't have good enough internet, et cetera, et cetera. We would also be happy to put together something that you could share on your social media page. If the city has a newsletter, you know, we can put a flyer or something in there. We also have found that if you either, and you also can tuck something in water bills, right? When they go out, you can put a notice ahead of time if you've got everything all lined up. We can do postcards and stuff like that and then we can work with the city to help print those and whatnot. We can also implore the, you guys as the steering committee as well as city council and other community leaders to invite people by personal invite. So we have found that, yes, you can go out there and say, hey, there's a survey, woo-woo, make a really pretty postcard and such. But if people can invite, you know, if you invite five people and you invite five people and you invite five people, the word kind of gets out by personal invite. That's also another way to, to get people to participate. It's all, if you do little bits of all these different mechanisms, you'll be able to reach into not only different people, but different community groups. So Manistee is not one large demographic, right? There's older people, there's younger people, there's families, there's, you know, people who are living by themselves. All the different demographics that are in Manistee, trying to get out the word using different mechanisms will hopefully get out different people. Because you don't just want to have the same people show up.
Yeah.
You know, and go to the different events. That's also why if you go out and you, or, you know, if you're ever out at the Fourth of July, everybody's walking by. We actually were, we were, we are, one of the projects we're wrapping up is the City of White Clouds master plan, where Andrew was just at. And we were at their Susquehann Centennial celebration last year. We had a table, we were out there for two or three hours and everybody was walking by. And people stopped and they completed the activities. Some are residents, some were people who lived there and now they come back to visit. And we're not going to exclude people if they don't live there, but also we were able to get some visitors who are participating. And I'm sure there's sort of mixed feelings, right? People live in Manistee. It's not just a place to vacation. But people are vacationing here and so sometimes it's maybe not a bad idea to get their input as well. So just trying to understand that there's different mechanisms and different ways, different outreach approaches to get different people from different demographic groups to participate. All those things combined, hopefully you get just a little bit enough to bring it, to reach as many groups as possible.
Thank you. Nick?
So how would you garner that information if we didn't go with any of these options?
So I, I want to just clarify, are you asking me if you didn't do community engagement, how would we get community?
Right, if we didn't opt into any of these four others that is not included in your team.
Correct.
How would you garner that information needed to put your plan together?
I would implore you, as a steering committee, that you really should do at least one. You technically legally do not have to, right? But good planning practice really, 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 really stresses that you should have one. I would not pretend to make up that the public said this or the public said that. We would have to say that there was no public input specifically solicited. The public had the option to come to planning commission meetings and provide public comments. That would be it. You, that would not be good planning practice and I, that would be difficult for me. So I would encourage you guys to, to consider one or two options, at least one.
And the only reason I'm saying that.
Yeah.
To be fair.
Oh, sure.
When we're comparing, and one of the things that you do look at is low price, right?
Oh, sure.
So if I, if I take this, pretty, pretty much you're on the same par with everyone else if you compare apples to oranges.
Oh, so.
Yeah. I will also.
Surveys were embedded in their price at thirty-three. Yours created an option.
Right, and the option again was just trying to demonstrate that there are other engagement options. I will tell you the difference between a couple thousand dollars and plans. You're going to want to go with a, an agency that you feel comfortable with. It's not usually worth a couple thousand dollars.
To go.
And I know, and I mean, like, maybe I came at the low bid because I didn't include engagement and I'm, you know, you know, saying that. And then therefore, like, I look bad because it's like, well, why didn't she put together the price? But to be fair, when we are not the low bid and somebody chooses someone for like a difference of five hundred dollars, it's not that, it's not worth that difference. You should go with an agency that you feel comfortable with, that you have a rapport with, that you're interested in and that you think will best serve your community. So I just kind of want to speak to that.
And the other question is, since you did work on a previous, is there any in that multi-generation task force that you have in your office that was part of working in Manistee?
So my, one of my colleagues, yes, he's been there, he's my age and he's been there, older, young, whatever, he's my, he's my colleague. He's been with the firm since two thousand and eight, so he knows, remembers working with Manistee. We also have others that are older than, he's a planner. There are other engineers who have been here and surveyors that have been here even longer. Who, I don't think, they were not part of that effort, but would have institutional knowledge, but yes. He was at, we, when we were talking about this project, he was like, well, I don't know if they're going to remember, but, you know, we did work with them like fifteen years ago, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Robert?
Company himself, on your part, I'm not really familiar with a lot, but I am very familiar with your surveying engineering departments.
Oh, okay.
As a surveyor, I have done many stuff. I've actually contacted your company twenty, twenty-five years ago. Because the engineering departments, because there is many plaques in this part of the state that have Williams and Works on it. On that, under engineering and surveying, it's fantastic work.
Thank you, thank you.
On the other, on the other part, I'm not really super familiar with it.
Sure.
Mark and Ross is there?
Can I just add two comments? Is that?
Sure.
So I just want to say, I'm not sure if you have a proposal in front of you. We do a lot of work with MEDC and trying to get communities positioned or communities who already are positioned to be RRC certified. Again, we're working currently with wrapping up the City of White Clouds master plan. They're trying to be RRC certified, same with the City of Big Rapids, wrapping up that master plan and they're aiming to be as well. If you have the proposal in front of you, there are a number of other communities that we've done specifically their master plans. We've also done other waterfront plans or economic development plans, corridor improvement plans. And, oh, so just that, that we, as a team and myself, familiar with that process, want to position you guys well to, to obtain that certification, to then open you up to the resources. And we also do projects for the RRC sites. So if you have like a particular property, we've helped work and done a lot of work with the RRC sites in individual cities as well. I just want to speak to that. And then when Jeff was talking about this US thirty-one and how there's a study coming up and they haven't designed the corridor. Housing, it sounds like that's a really big issue and we are actually working with a couple of communities where we've woven in goals and language in the master plan. In the implementation section, in the land use section, and trying to identify how we can set up the master plan and the implementation elements. To then basically have them ready to do, like a to-do list, and then start having the mechanisms in place to improve their housing. So just kind of recognizing that the community is interested in that, have community engagement that speaks to housing and gives their input. We've done that many different ways, survey, visioning sessions, so, you know, excited and ready and helping, interested in helping to take on that problem with Manistee and help you guys figure out what's the right fit for you when it comes to the master plan and setting up the planning commission as well as city staff. To be able to take on that challenge. I want to speak to that. And then two, that MDOT and the US thirty-one corridor, I actually know the North Region Planner well. I worked for previously and before I was working at Williams and Works. Excuse me. I would be very excited, non-motorized transportation planning is one of my passions as well. And to be able to just sort of do a little bit within the master plan to position you guys to take advantage and kind of say to MDOT, when the master plan is done or as we're wrapping it up, be able to sit with them across the table and say, well, we've had public input, we know that our community wants a, wants these improvements when it comes to pedestrians, people biking, walking and rolling. Being those people that are using wheelchairs or having, needing mobility assistance, we can do some parts of the master plan that does that as well. So again, the master plan does a lot of different things. We wouldn't be like, you know, focused on that and heavy, heavy. But I just want to say that, you know, MDOT will not take any of our community seriously when it comes to non-motorized position, non-motorized design unless they have a publicly vetted plan. And, you know, and if, and if you don't have that, MDOT's like, well, we don't know because we haven't heard from the public. Well, we could wrap some of those in in terms of questions or activities into the master plan and try to push MDOT to, if they haven't designed the corridor yet, US thirty-one, this is like a once in a lifetime, sorry, once in a generation opportunity. I mean, we all know that non-motorized, you know, biking is a big, not only economic development tool and tourism. But I saw a family walking from Family Fair back into town along US thirty-one here when I was in town and it's just like, oh, you know, and trying to push MDOT. And believe it or not, MDOT is interested in doing more for non-motorized transportation. You just need to push them. There are people there that are more and more open to that. So that's just to say as well, I'm very passionate about that opportunity. And I would love to kind of put, you know, as much as we can, put some things in place to help position the city to help take advantage of the master plan and pushing the MDOT to, to do the right things when it comes to non-motorized. So that was a little bit more, but thank you, Mark.
Is, would that be because we are all driven by the dollar? Is that extra?
So, I mean, all that, so no, because in my mind, what that is, is you put in some goals in the master plan, you put in a few questions in the survey. Or have the pop-up engagement. So, I mean, it's just taking those ideas, plugging them in in a meaningful way that will provide meaningful input to then set you up nice for implementation. So no, it's just kind of thinking specifically and strategically, trying to take advantage of things that are happening right now and, and setting those mechanisms in place.
And a lot of that was brought up during the master planning for the downtown development was the same thing. Because there's a lot of points that we miss because we don't have bike lanes, we don't have, you know, good sidewalks, we don't have pharmacies and things close by to take care of a walking population.
I do have a couple of questions.
Yes, yes.
I asked Jeff. So what is the greatest accomplishment, sorry? You and your team have worked on and what is your, what are you most proud of?
So I think for us, we could talk about a fabulous, you know, project or something that we got a award for. But I was talking with my colleagues, we have a staff meeting every week just to kind of touch base. For us, it's really about having repeat clients or being client, you know, service-driven. So it's not so much about like a specific project, but it's about if a community comes back to us and they feel like, you know, this project was done well enough, we want to continue that conversation, use their expertise. That's the accomplishment is the re, is the ongoing or reoccurring relationships that we have. You know, we've gotten awards, like last year we got an award for the City of Rockford's master plan through the Michigan Association of Planning. It was called like the Daniel Burnham Award. We have those AP, the Michigan Chapter APA awards in our office and, you know, it's nice. But it's really, but the accomplishment is being able to develop relationships and help a community thrive. And we've been around long enough where, you know, we can have repeat clients and, you know, continue those relationships, improve communities across Michigan, so.
Thank you. Then the last one, Tanya, is give us an example of jurisdiction, like city of Manistee that you have worked with. And what, what did your firm do for them?
Sure. So there's a couple that come to mind. One of them, believe it or not, the City of Lowell, it's not on the lake shore, but it's along, it's on the confluence of the Grand River and Thornapple River. And they have a great river walk now. And they've done a lot of investment in trails and we're, we have been their planner of record. Which just means like we're their planner for fifteen years or more at this point, as well as engineering and other services for them. But as we have been their, their planner, we have helped improve their river walk, their streetscape, we've done their master plan, we're doing, we did their last one, we're doing their current one. We did their parks and recreation plan. We've helped them write and get awarded gra, grants through the DNR. So Lowell is one. Also, I mentioned the City of Rock, I meant to say Rockford, sorry. What I'm also going to say is, so we also do work with South Haven Township and the City of South Haven. And population-wise, it's around the same size of Manistee. Granted, it's a township in a city, although the township is much more suburbanized than rural. And we have done their master plan update and their zoning ordinance. We also do a lot of zoning ordinance updates like all the time. And with those communities, or sorry, with South Haven Township in particular, they have been trying to figure out how to provide more housing for residents and trying to do that in a unique way. The township, oddly enough, is more interested in providing flexible housing options than the city. There's just a little bit of political dynamics happening in the city where the township is just like, we need more housing, let's figure this out, like, let's get to it, put politics aside. So that's been really refreshing. And we also are going to be doing, it was a shoreline, a shoreline update for the, for South Haven Township as well. And I can't remember if I said this, we also do what's called Planner of Record Services for them, as well as other communities. And that they call us up, you know, we're here at the planning commission to answer their questions, you know, do zoning reviews, site plan reviews, that kind of thing for, for South Haven and the City of South Haven. So in terms of communities that is similar to, to Manistee.
I have one other question on your timeline.
Yes.
You have kickoff meeting with the PC this month.
It could be later. So it was, so when the RFP was put out, it said that the decision timeline was May and June. And being ambitious and thinking, all right, the planning commission's going to get on it, you know, we'll be meeting in, in May, the decision will be made. We're ready to go that next month. That's what that means. So if you want to meet this month, there's still close to twenty-some days. You know, we can have special meetings if you guys want to handle master plan meetings that way, right? Because the planning commission can call, special meetings, we can do that. We can also start in July or August if everybody's on vacation in July or you typically don't have a July planning commission meeting. So it's really just about showing you that we're, we're, I'm ready to get started as soon as you guys are, so.
Any other questions?
No, none at this time, not me.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very good.
So next step is running through Teresa and voting on who we're going to pick.
Yeah, I think so. I'd like to have an answer. Let's go for it. You guys want to talk amongst yourselves.
Yeah, chop, chop.
That's right.
So.
Well, when I, when I went through before tonight, I had Spicer Group as my number one. And, and the Williams and Works was a close, a very, very close second, within a point in my grading. And part of that point was the, the price, just, just because we give value to, you know, best value. So that's kind of marginalized. So, and part of that is because. So, um, and part of that is because you know who you know. I mean, we know the Spicer Group. We know that they're competent, capable, and will do the job. Uh, also, they're doing the, the beach master plan, which, uh, we've just, uh, started to get rolling on. And I agree that it's, it's important to look at, that's from an economic standpoint, our beaches are a big generator. So, uh, the others, all four of them though, I'll be honest, are all capable. They're every, anyone that we select is going to give us a good prop.
Uh, yeah, that's true.
So that's, that's my, but my number one and number two was, uh, Spicer and then Williams and Works.
Yeah, I did too.
I did. Um, in all fairness, I, I, you know, you, you hate to, to, to take Spicer out of the mix because they had an issue and called and said that they couldn't make it. I didn't even know that we were gonna actually have representatives here until tonight. So that wasn't mentioned in any of the, the packets. So I didn't use that as any criteria, uh, from my judgment.
So are you ready to make your decision?
I, I'm ready to vote.
Okay.
All right.
Robert?
Yep, I've got a pretty good, I've got a very close idea between, uh, two of them, and I am ready to vote.
Pam?
I think so.
Ready to rock?
Sure.
Shelley?
I appreciate both presentations. They were fantastic. Everybody gave a lot of information. Um, I've already got it scored out. Yes, I'm ready.
Yeah.
Marlene?
I'm ready.
Roger?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. Um, all right. So I don't know how to go about a motion on this. Um, motion to vote for either McKenna or Williams and Works. Do I do the motion that way? Ask for a motion? I don't know.
I wouldn't make that motion. I wouldn't make that motion. No.
You would not?
Me, okay.
Should you? Unless the other two knew.
Yeah, I was gonna say, why don't we do like a poll first to see, you know, how many we have for each one of them?
The consensus of the group?
Yeah.
My, my concern is that if they didn't know that they were not in the game without being here, that's...
Did you mention that, you know, if they were not there?
I invite, well.
No, you invited them, but did you tell them that they did not attend, that they would not be considered?
No, I did not say that.
We've always had a thing if they're not interested enough to come. And they're a big enough company that somebody could have come from there to represent them, is my feeling.
It's, it's, and I made a statement about being unprofessional, so I apologize to Spicer Group. They are very professional.
Yeah.
Um, you know, not coming to the meeting. It's, it's just like any, like I said, any, anyone else that's coming before us. If they want something done, they show up.
Right. Or we postpone.
Or we postpone.
And we postponed more times than not.
Well, on items, yes.
Something like that.
Yeah, but it's a different situation.
We've got to actually get moving on this stuff because we're under downtime, line constraints for the plan. We only have so many, so much of a timeframe, we're already behind gate ball.
Yeah, we've been at two shows.
And we've talked about this since the beginning of the year. So.
For example, what I did, I actually had my mind fairly well made up before I even walked in the door here because I poured through these papers. And I've been pretty satisfied with what I came up with.
So we'll just do a poll?
I think that's what we should do. You know, I could just go through the first one, you know, how many people are in favor for their first choice of McKenna?
Or how do you suggest?
Are you asking?
Just go through.
Just go down the line and say who, and we can, yeah.
Did you ask that question? How many are in favor of McKenna?
I think if we just take a straw poll and, and say who your top one or two, it's up to you. And then see what the consensus is and narrow it down for a motion.
Yeah, just go through our, uh, our voting line.
Do you want me to start, Mark?
Yes, go ahead, Roger.
My first choice would be McKenna. My second choice would be Williams and Works. So whatever anybody else wants to do, go ahead.
My first vote is McKenna and Williams, second. First choice McKenna, second Williams.
Mine is, uh, first is Williams and Works and the second is McKenna.
Yeah, mine is Williams and McKenna is second.
Mine is Spicer is one and Williams and Works, number two.
I have Williams and then McKenna.
So what is that for this? Four and four?
Uh, two, three.
Well, we have a two.
Three for Williams and Works for number one.
But the vast majority is.
One for Spicer.
McKenna and Williams.
And divide by four and multiply by.
Dev it down to two.
With the square root of it.
And the square root is.
No, you know, I'm disappointed that the other two didn't come in. I figure you guys are us knowing and being involved with them all.
It might be, or, or something you forgot at the last minute.
Yeah, so three of each.
I know, so three of each.
Yeah.
But I'm just kind of like.
Yeah, so we would just need a motion for one or the other.
So what did we end up with here?
Three of, three for each.
Three, that's what I thought it sounded like.
Right. Yeah, so three for each. So we had, yeah.
So we have.
For first and second.
Tied.
Yeah.
We're tied.
Yeah.
We have a double tie.
Williams and Works has, uh, three in the number one spot and one, two, three, four in the number two spot. Um, and then McKenna has three in the number one and three in number two. So Williams has one additional in the number two spot. So if somebody would be comfortable making a motion for one of those two, then we can have a vote.
Okay, I would ask for a motion to.
I'll make a motion and then we, uh, look at Williams and Works.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by, motion by Roger, second by Bob. Further discussion?
They're both very high.
Yeah.
And it's, it's.
The consensus, everybody seems to like Williams.
Uh, when I went through my figuring out, I came up one point between the two companies. They're that close.
Okay. So no, no further discussion?
So what happens if we want more than two of the options with the Williams and Works? We can't go over the 33.
Can't go over the 33.
Right.
Correct.
But there is something that we could negotiate that once we started looking and really drilling down, there could be something that we could just take off. And she was willing to work with us with that. Because it is part of a grant, which all of them knew. So that's why we're at that top amount.
Right.
Yeah. But I guess I should let you.
Well, within the options, it's surveys and engagement.
Right.
From all the other bids.
Right.
Right, yeah. And both the companies have offered that, pretty much.
Where are we at, Marco? We had a motion.
We have a motion and a second. There's no further discussion, so if we can take a roll?
Take the roll.
Um, could I ask for a point of order clarification? Are, is the planning commission recommending this to council? Or does the planning commission vote to engage in the contract and then sign the contract?
We are voting to engage.
Yes.
To engage.
Does not have to go to council, no.
Thank God.
It'd be another six months with city council.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
Commissioner Schmansky?
Yes.
Commissioner Yoder?
Yes.
Commissioner Weiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mamberto?
Yes.
Commissioner McBride?
Yes.
Vice Chair Slavinsky?
Yes.
And Chair Whitlock?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Congratulations. And I just want to thank Jeff from McKenna, uh, for coming up. Uh, you did great. Very, very close. Um, but thank you.
Thank you. You guys are good hands, for sure.
Yeah. That's what it's all about.
Thank you both.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Both made it very.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Move on to 95 Maple.
Library.
Library. What are we doing with that?
Yes, I just wanted to let you know that, um, they have not started, 95 Maple. Um, just reviewed through the plans. Um, they had some drainage issues and, you know, some of those things that they were working on. That was it. Just kind of touch, touch and base about it.
Are, are there anything that we could actually look at yet? Or are they're not that far?
They're not that far yet. Yep, that's it. And then for the site plan review committee, um, I did kind of shoot out a little bit of an email just about some of the drainage with, uh, DPW. And then I was talked with, um, Mark had suggested, and I had forgotten that we need one or two possibly people from the planning commission to be part of that email chain and be part of that reviewing. So it wasn't a surprise to anybody here. So we had talked about, um, either Pam or Bob or maybe both of them taking a look at that. So, um, my, my issue with the library was really just mainly for DPW, but they've not started yet. So.
Yeah, because I guess I misunderstood. Uh, I thought one of the library, um, employees had said there was some sort of a plan drafted up.
Nothing that, I mean, it was just the paperwork that you got at the la- like two meetings ago.
Okay.
That, but, you know, nothing more, nothing. I actually have had to reach out to them a couple of times, say, hey, where are you at with this? What's going on with this? Just because I haven't heard a whole lot. So, yeah.
Well, I just wondered because a club I belong to, we were wanting to put a bench. And she said that there were requirements as a type of bench that had to go in. So I kind of took that to mean that they had some sort of a plan in place.
Oh.
And.
This, my thoughts that the fence they want is down that driveway because when cars pull in off of first.
Yeah.
And they scoot down through there and there's kids out in that yard. They don't want them, any liability of them running into that driveway.
There's two different things going on at the library. The one I'm talking about is the drainage off, um, where the water runs on the back of the building and the drainage on below. I'm not talking about where the house was demoed and all of that. So I apologize. I shouldn't have made that clarification. Yeah. So I'm just talking about the drainage and that's why I was worried about talking to DPW and it was that part. So, yeah, the other I don't know anything about yet. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Nope, absolutely.
Thank you. Uh, 457 River Street, The Outsider?
Uh, yes. Last night, um, they had made the motion, um, to, they are, John, the owner of The Outsider, had given a presentation and the information to them about the outside is now it's being utilized as four seasons all year round. So they're using it with the covered because of Sleigh Bell, also covered during the fall when the kids are trick-or-treating or people coming for hot cider or cocoa, those types of things. And then the color of paint and that type of stuff. So it is going to be improving the looks. Um, last night at my meeting, that passed. And so they're going to end up finally repairing everything and everything's going to look nice and all of that. So that was good.
So they're going to build it out as planned?
Not specifically, no. I mean, there's, they kind of, with the certificate of appropriateness, said it was okay with what they had going on. Um, the benches they used inside, it's been kind of a struggle to say this is what you had, know that you're doing this, we want it completed. And did you guys want to still see that and come in front of you? Or?
Did they ever come before us?
I think they have enough oversight without us with the, the downtown association. Are they working along with you, uh, pretty good with what needs to be done?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I mean. They, they're, they've got plenty of people looking and.
OSB's only going to last so long. That OSB's only going to last so long.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I agree.
Right, right. And I, this is kind of the take that I've, with me coming in new and there's things that have been happening and I'm in the mix of a both of them, where do we say, okay, this is where it is, but we just need to be done with it, put it to bed because there's new things coming down the pipeline? Or do we stress about minor things that we know that probably aren't going to last and they are going to replace it or end up having a price at the time and then we're going to have a higher standard or criteria? But I, I'm trying to pick my battles.
I, I'd be more worried about the three vacant buildings that have been vacant for the last 20 years.
I'm happy they're in business.
Than the ones that are open.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't worry about anything. You just pick her one at a time.
[laughing]
Because it changes every day, something. Somebody wants to do something.
Oh, then we will let it go.
Let her go.
Okay. All right, public comments.
Take it.
Uh-oh.
Got trouble now.
My name's Andrew Stafford, 275 First Street. Uh, I'm the new Director of Economic Development at the Chamber of Commerce and just wanted to come before, uh, planning commission and introduce myself. I'm really excited to be here. I've always wanted to live in a lake shore town. A little bit about me, I grew up in Metro Detroit, um, in Clarkston, Michigan. Uh, spent the last year in White Cloud in Noguaygo County. Yeah, right? And Teresa's been very welcoming. And I, I'm really excited to be a part of your community. Um, but just a kind of offshoot here, just while I was looking for housing, by the way, it became very prevalent how real the housing crisis is. And people in my field, we always talk about it, but it's not until you move to a place where right now, if you look on Zillow, there's only two places that are affordable and neither one are livable. I, I looked at both of them and they were, they were substandard living conditions. So at least for people like me, like that, that's something just keep in the forefront of your mind, especially when we're talking about square footage. You know, I mean, college dorms are 200 square feet. And obviously that's not livable, but like, I want, I want affordable housing for, for me, for my standards, right? So, um, you know, not vouch for housing, but just housing that's affordable for my income level and having an abundance of it so I have options. But I, you know, luckily I found housing here. I have a great, great place now, um, right off of First Street, two-bedroom apartment. Really excited to be there. Uh, but I'm really looking forward to partnering with the city. Teresa's been fantastic. Uh, but just coming up with some more innovative solutions, especially for the housing, because I know housing's an issue for everybody right now and, and continue to, you know, hopefully get developers in here and have flexibility and, and be able to work as one unit, rowing in the same direction and making sure that we can actually support the City of Manistee, um, you know, and increase the prosperity here. So thank you for, uh, welcoming me to your community. And I look forward to, you know, years of partnership, if you will. So thank you very much.
Well, you've been with, with this crew a lot.
Yeah.
Fine.
Yeah, go ahead, Dave.
You've saw, you saw us now, so.
Yeah.
Better.
And Habitat for Humanity is going to start building a brand-new home for the missing middle, starting in July.
Are they really?
Yeah.
Where, where is that at?
Road, three-quarter acre, 1,200 square foot with a walkout basement, unfinished walkout basement, but 1,200 square foot finished.
Is that what you showed me?
Yeah.
That's a very nice home.
Wow, that's great work.
And it's really designed to be for.
Yeah.
People like you, the missing middle, the, uh, that aren't eligible for any subsidy, but yet are not, are not in the.
Yeah.
Six-figure salaries.
Right, and that, that's the.
Buy the $500,000 or the $350,000 home, so.
Yeah, yeah. I'm, I'm glad to see that though. Every unit's helping right now when it comes to housing.
Well, this is our first and hopefully we'll do three more within the next year and a half. So, and then after that block.
Is that city water and sewer and everything out there?
No, it isn't. We, we couldn't get it that. We, we could get it on the other end of the lot, but we couldn't get it on that side.
Yeah, you're more, you're more in phyllo than anything else.
Yeah, it'll be, it is phyllo. So it's septic and, and well.
Okay. Phyllo's water lines aren't out there yet.
Well, we welcome you to the city.
All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. Have a good one.
Yeah. Staff?
Been a pleasure.
So in front of you, there's the permit list.
Yep.
So I just want to quickly just go over the permit list right here in front of you.
Oh, okay.
This is from January till the end of May. And as you can see, I've included the certificate of appropriateness. I did one parcel split, um, actually it was called a com- And as you can see, I've included the certificate of appropriateness. I did one parcel split, actually it was called a combination for that one. Did some residential land use, a couple signs, site plan review, two of them, level one, temporary activity permit. And then when you flip to the next page, that is all Jerry Blue, the building inspector, all of his. And if you look at that first page, the second page, and then we go down to the next, his total that he's brought in is seven thousand five hundred and fifty-six dollars and fifty cents worth of permits for just the building permits.
Is that right?
Yep, and then we, I did not include, though, in here, and I should have, the rental permits, all of those. Because he's done quite a few, I think a hundred and fifty already, rental inspections just for this first year, so. The next, where you see the twenty-five dollars, that was a driveway permit. And then the next, because they're kind of combined how they are, those are sign permits, four hundred dollars. So that's your permit list. And I'll try to get better at doing this like quarterly. I know I've been behind on it, but now with a staff assistant that I'll be able to help with, and any help from Roger that he's volunteering for, I'll be able to get this list here a little bit more often, so.
On monthly basis.
Because we get asked so many times what's going on, and we.
Right.
And you say, well, I don't know. Well, aren't you on that, you know?
Yep.
So it's, it's nice to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Very nice. Well, how come we don't have a permit list here for the War Hardware opening? I didn't see it. That was in the paper?
They're just.
That, that's just, that's the existing, that's the backside of War Hardware.
Yeah.
It's been like, it's just another business moved in, so.
Oh, another business moved in, yeah, but wouldn't they still need a permit?
We're three Ps.
Three Ps in a pod, right, yes.
That's the fourth, fifth business in the last three or years of that property.
We just require a business registration, but not even everybody is real great about doing that for us, so we try.
Well, I said the other day in the paper, was the three girls opening a metaphysical operation and.
Yep, and they did get a business registration, they sure did.
Oh, they did, okay, okay.
There's been places that, there was a flower shop in there for a while, too.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, okay.
Actually, one of the same girls in that three used to have a fitness business inside the one that they're talking about at Dying Hard.
Oh, okay.
Oh.
All right. Yep.
All right. All right, okay.
So complaints, yeah, so we've just gotten, I've gotten a lot of phone calls, and so has Jerry, about, I mean, it's summer season, tourist, busy air. So just trying to field a lot of those. A couple of them have been about lights, now that we've got all the boats that are docking, a lot of shining lights in people's homes. Yes, but it is, and I've seen videos, and it is, it's bad. So they actually have, but they have to either have it shine a certain way or cannot be intrusive. And so I've had to write some letters and stuff, and, yep, so that is part of the ordinance. So I'm just letting you know with that, and then reminding you of also the see, click, fix, use that, that's what it's there for. I've been fielding a couple of those, and, yep, that's what we're here to do. Next, we just need to, oh, one other thing that I wanted to add before this, I did go to the Pipe and Plovers ribbon cutting, and it was fantastic. And it was great to go there with Andrew and just to meet her. And so I've been helping Bill out when he needs assistance, if he can't make something, one of us always tries to go to the ribbon cutting ceremony. So it's really a great way for us to connect. One thing I've thought of and that I've really noticed is I need to get myself a name tag that actually says, and something that has our logo. So right away, when I get to meet people, I mean, it's, it's great, and now that I am representing the city, that's right.
Why don't we all get shirts?
Yeah.
There you go.
Why don't you help a fundraiser, half of it could go to the daycare and half of it for shirts, so.
So a chamber ambassador.
I'll be selling doughnuts tomorrow.
Yes, that's right, yeah, oh, I know, I know. And then lastly, deciding for July, we're going to have Laurel, Laura Heitzelmann, yep. And then for August, who do you think that you'd like or we have on our suggested list for August, or let me know? Or we could have a guest speaker.
Well, I thought that we would have.
Ah, Jovi. He was on this morning, yeah.
That's true.
Little River.
Chris Stapleton, no.
How about a judge?
The, the general manager from The Vogue.
Okay. Oh, yes.
There you go.
We did talk about that, that's right, okay.
And then, well, Matt, I keep calling Matthew Stafford, but wrong one.
Andrew.
He introduced himself tonight, so what do you have him back after he gets his feet under him? So he knows what to expect and what he's been working on.
Yeah, yeah.
Does that sound interesting enough?
Good, number one.
Okay, and then if we reach out to September, having the police and fire come in.
Okay.
Then in August, you and I have to address city council.
Yes, I do. So then lastly, the historical district. It was kind of a little rocky meeting yesterday. We muddled through it, got through it, not a lot that I really want to talk about. I do want to say that I did deny the permit for Mr. Matheson, Mathewson. He submitted a sign permit, and I had to deny the sign permit, first of all, because he does not have a business registration. He's been asked several times. He also did not give me payment for the sign permit, and I talked to him, and I also mailed him the sign permit decline or, you know. And so, and also I talked to him about it, so.
Which business is Mathewson?
Um.
Mr. Mathewson is upholstery.
Oh, the upholstery.
Yeah, upholstery, right. And he's put a light up, and I know that, I think he's going to be putting up a sign, I hope he doesn't, but it looks like he might be putting up a sign, so.
He's a different character.
Yeah, so.
Did the person down from City Drugs is part of that Rosemary, that building, and is, I'm sure his permits have all expired and he's.
Yeah, there are, yeah, we went through a list yesterday with my HDC, there is, and that's a never ending battle on some of them, yeah.
Yeah, that was where I don't know why.
Yeah, and that's all that I have.
Oh, there you go.
August first, Teresa.
Yeah.
I will not be in the meeting.
Okay.
Oh, no.
We'll have to party, that one.
We'll see, we'll see.
We'll make all the decisions for the master plan in August, when Mark's not here.
All right.
You're going to make me work.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going to have to earn your pay there, buddy.
Yeah.
You'll get it. I want to thank News Advocate for coming, staying.
Yeah.
We had some good stuff. Okay.
We haven't started snoring over there yet.
Yeah. Any, anything from Bob?
Uh, no, just want to thank Teresa for all the work she's been doing. I've seen some of, she's doing basically labor a lot of it. Just keep your tires on your car, so.
I picked up the two best, and so I've got those as spares. I've had two flat tires in the past three weeks, so it's been pretty awful. So I got four new sneakers on the car, so, and it's Betty's car. My mom passed away, gave me the car, so it's called Betty's Car. So Betty's Car's doing good, it's rocking, it's got four new sneakers, two thousand fifteen, just rolled a hundred thousand miles on it, so. It's a Florida car, so. I'm, I'm plugging away, so I'm trying.
Of course, with your drive.
Yes, seventy-eight miles one way, so.
Seventy-eight?
So many years.
Yeah, yeah, one way, yeah.
So that means it's a little.
Nick, you got anything?
Yeah.
The only thing is, is I still get people asking what's happening with the Gateway project. Is, is it just crickets, right, so?
There's been a little bit of discussion. TNO has met with me once, just shared a little bit, but just kind of still not sharing much.
Because I know they're looking at reversing their, their start plans from inside to the.
Yeah, exactly, yes, yeah. And I know he's met with, I know he's met with Bill, and I don't know who else, so, yeah.
A lot of people that are obviously interested in, you know.
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, there's definitely a hole in our community with that, so.
And this will be the second, second summer with it vacant there.
Yeah.
And then the other thing was, is the, have you got the sign for Scoobies, has that been?
Just waiting on, everything's been approved, just waiting on him, yeah. We figured out the brackets, we figured out the position, all that. Nope, just Marty's got so many things going on, so. Yeah, we're, I'm excited, it's so cool looking, so can't wait for that.
That drainage thing, they've got plastic around there, and it's filled with water from all the heavy.
Yeah, rain, and he has now has some posts there, and I know part of the fencing has come down, but he does know that it's slowly.
Is he planning on putting fencing?
Yes, all the way around it and everything, yeah, so the safety.
Looking at putting things in it at one time.
Oh.
I thought, ju- just, just so it wouldn't just be gray rock.
Oh, oh, yeah.
He was just, just trying to, just so it wouldn't just be a big empty blank.
Right.
Anything?
Underwater sculpture.
Get it dry. Uh, no, they've, they've kind of fixed the things that I was burping about.
Well, there you go.
So I'm worried about the snakes that you keep posting, though. Snakes!
Yeah, on Facebook, that way. I have lots of snakes at my house, so, yeah. I live right on the river, so. Blow snakes, puff adders or whatever, blue racers, a lot of them.
It's good, though.
Oh, yes, I love them, so.
Woods nice, you know.
I hope they get big enough to eat the squirrels.
Yeah, they keep critters down, so.
Shall we?
No.
Eat squirrels.
Marlene?
I heard a rumor that Olson's grocery store people.
Yes.
That she's been quite ill in the hospital, and that the sons are looking at putting housing into that area of the old Olson Grocery Store. Have you been approached with anything?
Okay, so is that also save a lot?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So there is actually, they have leased the building, and it is a flea market that is going inside of it. I've met with the person that's leasing it, and it is in a C-three area, and it is allowed. So been talk about, he has to get building permit, that type of thing, if he's going to be doing some things on the inside. Going to set up booths, have people sit, or just pay rent in those for their items, and have a flea market. Pardon?
Isn't that kind of like redeemed, but it's.
Similar, yeah, similar.
Just different stuff.
Yep, different things, different items. The gentleman that is doing that, he also owns the pawn shop that is just outside of the area. Yeah, right by Wesco, yep.
Franklin.
Yes, Paul, exactly. So, yeah, going to do that, and then he had talked about some other things, and so they're going to be open Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays? Just three days and the weekend. Talked about, you know, temporary permit, maybe a food truck on the weekends, and getting a sign put up. So he wants to do everything right, got the business registration, site plan review, level one, so if that comes up, I'll be asking Paul and Bob to, I mean, Paul. Pam, Paul, got that on the brain, Pam, it's late, guys, that and Bob to be reviewing it, so, yeah, that's what's going in there.
The Paul?
Yes, Paul.
Hello.
All right, Paul.
No, I'm good, Paul.
You're good?
Yeah, I'm good, yeah, we're doing good.
I do not have anything.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, I know, there's something wrong with me.
That's it, something's wrong.
I will. It is nine forty-four. I will ask for a.
I motion.
Second.